Okay, you ready? Well, good afternoon. A meeting is called to order and of course we're a few minutes behind schedule and a lot of business to take care of in a short amount of time, obviously having moved our work session matters from the ninth to today. So we'll get started and follow, of course, the agenda as posted with item 1.02, a transformation update. Dr. King?
Yes, Chairman Houston, members of the board. The transformation update will consist of several items that I'd like to share with the board just in the form of an update. You may recall that the board requested that we provide information to you each month in terms of how we are proceeding. And I'll draw your attention back to the document that you received a few weeks ago that was entitled Planning, Training, and Information Timeline that has the full rollout. So you already have that, you may have to go back and retrieve that. So that's really our guide and our gauge. And then with that said, the most noteworthy items for now from that document, as you take, as you get, not having opportunity to take a look back at that document and review it, most noteworthy items for us this summer would consist of the reconfiguration schools, the four pairings and the activity around that, and it's included in that document. And we are on schedule, which would consist of classroom space and modular units that are to be moved from the month of July, which is now, and that's proceeding as we speak, through August, which takes us into really the first, the end of the first week of August with the skirting and all of the necessities that must happen and to be completed from a definitive standpoint by August 16. And so, again, that's the outline that you received earlier, but my role today is to tell you that it has begun, we're on schedule as we speak. And as I present this to you, you also know that these are the things that departments work around, a combination of departments and specifically the operations department through Dr. Simmons and working with Mr. Gay to make these things happen. But foremost activity again will be around those trans, those reconfiguration schools. And I'll remind you that PB Young, of course, in reference to reconfiguration is being paired with Tidewater. And PB Young is slated as pre-K 2. Tidewater Park is slated as 3-5. Popular Hall slated as pre-K 2. Fairlawn slated as 3-5. And that's not new, you all have that information. So it also consists of not just the modules that you received and document in terms of numbers for movement and setup and erection, but also the student records, materials, furniture that is necessary to be moved. And the department went through the necessary procurement activity for that in collaboration with Business and Finance. So operations worked through Business and Finance along with the executive directors to schedule that timeline for that movement. And that timeline consists of activity between this particular month that is also on the previous document that you received, this particular month through August 11 to have those records being moved. The only item that I will put on your radar in reference to that is that they work that process around summer school so that it could be staggered with those schools that are being used for summer school being the ones that will be slated to have the last leg of that. But that is in movement, we are on target, I'm being assured that we are on schedule with that. The other item of importance for us would be Lafayette Winona. And you know, the vote for transformation for Lafayette Winona was to close Lafayette Winona for one year, repurpose it, and open it as a choice school. And so activity for us that's our foremost important importance right now and should be of importance to the board that consists of the selection of the principal for leading that particular school. And we are on target with that. The interview process has taken place with all of the various tiers of that process to be completed. And you should get, you should receive a report on that later today as well. So progress on Lafayette Winona and the principal to lead the 3-8 choice school. Item number four, item of importance, of course, is open campus. And we all know that open campus because of our budgetary constraints was not funded. And so then we quickly wanted to, through the committee, for being facilitated through Dr. Simmons and working with all of the departments, pull the committee back together to look at creative thinking around a Plan B or Plan C in terms of funding not being in place. And so those discussions are moving forward. As a matter of fact, there should be a meeting that will take place again with that committee tomorrow morning to talk about the funding. And one thing that I remember, that I will remind you of is that the purpose of this and the reason that it is of paramount importance for us is that we've got a three-tiered approach here to address the needs of our overage for grade middle schoolers, also to address the needs of our high school students that are behind on credits and the rule of thumb that we, that has been discussed centered on students that are behind by six or more credits, for example, and also attracting back those students that have dropped out. This is of obvious importance and significance to us because it has extreme impact on real-time, on-time graduation, getting students back on track, credit recovery, so that it impacts that graduation quotient that you always see near this point in the year when we look at our high schools and how we are faring with graduation rates. Well, I would submit to you that one of the struggles and challenges around that is that we've not had this traditional approach in our system and we are in dire need of that. But again, we also understand that there is a finite amount of money and everything in the proposed budget is not going to get funded, and this is one of those, but it does not stop the continuation of our planning and strategizing around how we might be able to make that happen. So long story short, again, another follow-up committee meeting has been scheduled with all the parties that will be present tomorrow morning to plan and look at the contract implications because this would consist of the partnership with Magic Johnson Bridgegate along with our school system to deliver these services. And I still support that idea. However, what we're doing now consists of the fact that that committee has already identified the students. And with the work of Dr. Simmons along with Mr. Coleman, along with other executive directors and principals and middle, well, high school principals, middle school principals and others, I'm sure I've omitted some folk, but not intentionally, but they have done the work based on taking a look at the caseloads, determining from those caseloads that three-pronged, three-tiered approaches I just mentioned, how many are eligible, and then determining how to prioritize that eligible caseload because we already know we can't accommodate on day one the 100% of the caseload. And so we know we would have a waiting list. And so there are things that would have to happen. So long story short, again, they've identified the caseload, they've done that work, they've met, they know who the students are, and so the next step will be to prepare to have the necessary counseling and conversations with the students and the parents to talk about a plan and what we're working to do. But again, we must iron out that funding. One thing that I'll mention to you is that we worked earlier with a projected number at middle school being X number of students that we thought we would begin to be able to start with, X number of students at the high school level that we thought we'd be able to begin with, and we're planning on adjusting the allotments accordingly. That's still really the, at the core of our conversations tomorrow with the committee. Looking at the caseloads, the students that have already have been identified, overage for grade, students that have already been identified, high school that are six credits or more behind, knowing already who they are, then looking at what we have staffing-wise at each of those schools. And if we move X number of students from those campuses, how would it impact the allotment needs of those campuses? In other words, one would think that if you move 30 students away from a school ground, then that one allotment ought to apply to open campus. So that's the kind of thinking we're looking at, but it doesn't always work out as an exact science. So that's why we're going to have to lay it out and slice and dice to see how many staff members we can have and not impact the budget, which means that it could impact the numbers of students we're able to begin with. So some unanswered questions there, but we're looking forward to the meeting tomorrow. I mentioned the state, the caseloads have been identified, so work has been done to move forward. I will move on from there to professional development, which is also a part of the previous document that you received a few weeks back, but I want to kind of bring you up to date with that because professional development has been ongoing across all of the transformation schools even as of the previous school year. And you remember that some of those themes consisted of Avid, consisted of early literacy. Remind you that early literacy is important for those pre-K schools, pre-K 2 schools, rather, with the reconfiguration and the pairing of those four. Also Montessori strategies, also STEM, et cetera. So just a quick update on Avid, which would consist of Popular Hall's, consists of Fairlawn, consists of Lake Taylor Middle, and Booker T. Washington High School. We've already during the month of July, 6 through 9, we've had district officials attend training, Avid training away from our division, and we can now officially begin the two-year certification process for our central office and for our four Avid schools. So that has, has moved forward. So that's one item of professional development that you, would be noteworthy for you. Also principals have selected teams to attend one, at least one implementation training, and that should be going forward as we speak because it is designed to take place July 15 through 18. And that's outside of the division as well. Dr. Charbonneau is also attending to complete the elementary district leadership Phase 1 training as well. So we're school-level training, central-level training, so that the expectations that we should have at the district level are also aligned with what happens at the school level. Avid also requires at least eight individuals for secondary schools and four persons for elementary schools to attend and complete Phase 1 implementation training at a summer institute prior to schools being eligible to begin the two-year certification process. So all four of those schools and central office are now eligible to, eligible to begin that process. So I'm proud of the work that has been done, still moving forward with that and what this is going to mean for those four schools as we're now, by doing this, we're able to build that Avid process from elementary through middle through high school and begin to move that process forward. I will shift gears from that to professional development as it relates to early literacy. I would want to pinpoint that because the four schools that we know are on the list for pairing have implications for needs around early literacy, meaning pre-K 2. And that's why we recommended this because we see some real, real significant benefit in a focus on a pre-K 2 initiative. But if you're going to have that focus, then you want specialists in early literacy in those buildings. So professional learning for these four schools, that piece has moved forward, intensive literacy training onsite, job embedded training and coaching through a partnership. And that will be with an internal, external agency, I don't have that agency listed at this point, but we'll have that. And the onsite training and the onsite coaching will occur two times per month and also continue for the entire school year. And each site session will be followed by a webinar as well. And so I'm sure we'd be glad to provide you some information on that if you want to log into that and see what the discussion is around. I think it would be very beneficial for board members to see that. And so Montessori strategies, of course, that has moved forward from last year, but things are proceeding with that because that's Monroe, PB Young, Tidewater Elementary as well. However, with the fact that PB Young and Tidewater are also receiving quarterly training, as I mentioned earlier with early literacy, they also receive that early literacy training. So we're balancing that so that we're not having too many things going on at the same time. Our clo, well, not yet. STEM, we've acquired the rights at this point to the STEM Discovery Resources, which is a national entity with, linked to national standards for STEM. And all of our MPS schools and students will have full access to the NSTA, the National STEM's piece, lesson plans, and teacher resources. And so each of those, each of those lessons, each lesson also provides interactive student simulations. Just remember that STEM done correctly means that it is integrated within the curriculum. And the laboratory activities and all of the competition with robotics and all those other things that come into play certainly, certainly is a part of that, but those things are really an enhancement of what you receive from the integrated process as well. So we've done, we've moved forward with that. Discovery, the discovery piece that we mentioned will provide onsite training for teachers and, and that will begin, will continue through the early fall as well. So onsite is significant for us. I'll close with the professional development piece by mentioning that principals and assistant principals will receive a one-day instructional leadership workshop, have received a one-day leadership workshop already through June 20th around instructional leadership. A two-day instructional leadership workshop is scheduled going forward for August 14 and 15. Administrators are continuing their training on instructional leadership best practices and characteristics of highly effective leaders. Two key items for us this current school year will center on effective instructional leaders as well as effective teachers, not just highly qualified, but effective, meaning how do you get, how do you get results based on what you are rolling out in terms of student achievement? And that training will continue on a monthly basis throughout the school year. All teachers, a two-day curriculum and assessment workshop on August 19 and 20. Some of this I'll bring back to you next month, but teachers will work with Virginia, with VDOE, our local school division, and lead turnaround partners as well where appropriate. And we will focus on what we refer to as unpacking the standards, understanding the new rigor of the standards, also structuring lesson plans to focus on new rigor and creating assessments that would allow our students to be poised and prepared to perform on any summative assessment after we've gone through the formative steps. Some teachers will also receive the new textbook adoption training as well. So focused training will continue on the remaining four professional learning days this school year, and additional updates will be provided to you in August. Know that with Tidewater, Popular Hall's, all of the pairings with the modular units and the things that we need to do that I told you was on schedule also will consist of the technology updates that need to happen with those particular units and spaces and preparation. And those things are moving forward and on target as well. With that said, I believe I can conclude my transformation update if there are no questions.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Dr. Stewart?
At this time, I don't think we've done any redistricting for any of those six prepared schools.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Others?
Let me just go down the little outline that you had discussed briefly. For Lafayette Winona, we're going to be in the process of choosing the principal. Once the principal is chosen, is that person going to then determine the staff that she'll have for the building and then the subsequent training for the IB 3 through 5 and then 6 through 8?
There will be, that will be done by committee approach.
Okay.
Of course, principal heavily involved in that as well as the executive director heavily involved in that as well as human resources and teaching and learning from a curriculum standpoint. So we're going to, we're going to form a team once that person is approved to lay out all of the steps that are necessary between now and throughout the school year to be ready.
Okay.
Which would include staffing and which would include, we've got many things to do. That's why it's important that we get this person on board now so we can begin that work. Because one, one item of importance will be building a lottery process that is fair and equitable to achieve what we want to achieve as far as district-wide choice. So that is exciting and both pretty challenging to do, so but we're looking forward to that.
Okay. And we're going to be pursuing the application process for that, to be certified IB for the, for the early and for the middle school?
Yes.
Okay. And then my next question is for open campus. We're still pursuing grant funding, correct?
Right. That is a part of the discussion, and Dr. Simmons has been working pretty diligently on that. And in tomorrow's committee, we'll receive more information on that as well with all the people that's at the table, all of our committee, internal committee at the table so that she can give an update on, on what that looks like at this point and what the potential may be.
Okay.
And so, and building from that, then adjusting our timeline as we see the rollout occurring. The thing that I want to ensure is that as we make these steps, that we are pretty certain that we're dotting i's and crossing t's so that when we announce that we're a start date, a definitive start date, that that is really a start date that we are going to be able to stick to. And that's, that's of importance. I don't know, Dr. Simmons, you want to provide any other comments on that?
No, I think you've covered it unless there's some more questions.
No, I just thought it was very good that the article that came out in the Virginia Pilot with regards to the Poverty Commission, how supportive they were for education as being a leading factor in reducing poverty, and they all seemed to be very receptive. And I think you're on it, correct?
I am.
And Dr. Houston, you're on it as well. So they're very supportive of the open campus ideas. So, you know, with the grant funding that we're still pursuing, you know, if we can build our foundation for that, I think that's, that's great since, you know, we couldn't open the doors as soon as we wanted based on our personal operating budget.
We're still working to be able to open as soon as possible.
Okay.
And so we're not, we're not holding back.
Right.
Taking a step back from that, but we want to, when we say as soon as possible, we want to ensure that all the pieces are in place.
Right.
So that we can have a quality start.
Mm-hmm. For the professional development, for the Avid instruction, is it just a certain, a certain percentage of instructors in the building that have to have the two-year certification process, or is it something that we're going to strive to have all of our instructors that are in the building providing the Avid instructor receive?
Typically through Avid, you have people that are trained and endorsed at your various grade levels first.
Okay.
And then you grow that.
Okay.
And because, because part of it is to select, begin to select students that are great candidates for the whole process of the Avid training and the Avid model. And then ultimately you'd like to grow it to the point that you have the vast majority of your children taking advantage of the Avid model. So we're beginning by doing the training by grade level in groups of teachers first so that they can come back and work on some redelivery, then have some of the Avid team from the outside come in and do some work with us too.
Okay. And that's all that I have to write down.
Okay.
So Dr. King, a few questions for me regarding the reconfiguration of the elementaries. Are we continuing to really enforce the communication to the parents and the children so that they are well aware of what's going to be ahead of them in the coming weeks? Because again, we're not really now facing too many weeks between now and the start of school. And has there been good orientation for these students to know exactly where they're going to go? What will be ahead of them? Do the parents know and so on?
I would say yes. I think we've been pretty close to that in terms of giving the parents the necessary information in terms, in reference to where the children will attend, what the changes are, the timeline. We had discussions at each one of the schools. Had parents that were there that attended, and then use other means of giving that communication out for, for parents that were not there. We had meetings that included this teaching staff, and that's how we really outlined the timeline. And so that's being reported in an ongoing manner to them to keep them updated in terms of where we are. And I know, and as well as operations department, they have worked on the modifications that need to take place with transportation.
Right.
Because with the routes and that kind of thing. And I believe that that might be complete and ongoing, one and up, right?
Ongoing. And so, and Dr. Williford in reference to reconfiguration and communicating to the parents in terms of the changes that are being made, we did a lot of that at the end of the school year, identified the students, met with the parents, sent the information. So you want to chime in on that?
Yes, I would just add that all of those things that you mentioned has happened. At this point, principals are preparing to open the school, ensuring that, of course, that buildings are ready to receive students and doing those things that they were doing normally during the, during the summertime and just ensuring that they are prepared with their, their expectations and communications that would regularly happen during, during the school year. So preparing to open with the new reconfiguration in terms of, you know, grades, pre-K through 2 and 3 through 5, so.
And I believe that we began to move forward with having those students and families go and visit and meet those staffs and that kind of thing. That's ongoing as well, yeah.
Two more questions. Technology and accreditation of those schools. So I've been to some of those schools and some had greater technology capabilities than others, and what I was hoping is that all would have great technology and superior technology going into the school year. Can you give me assurances to that or?
Well, technology update was provided here recently through Dr. Simmons and her technology department that included Tidewater, Popular Hall's, PB Young, and Fairlawn. And to, and done based on a certain standard that we want to see in each of those schools. And so there is a plan that is being implemented to bring each one of those schools to, up to that certain standard.
Right.
And that movement is going forward too, down to the point of the number of desktops.
Right.
Down to the point of the number that would need to be moved and reconfigured and that kind of thing. So there's a plan for each of the schools that they've already mapped out to do that and a timeline for that.
Okay. And I know that we have not heard yet the school-level SOLs. Today we'll get a summary of SOLs district-wide, but of those four schools, I would hope as a board, if we could, get a report sooner or later where we think they're going to come out when it comes to their SOL scores and their accreditation status. And what does that mean given their reconfiguration?
Right.
So I know you can't necessarily answer that today in this setting.
Right.
But if we could have that answered sooner or later so that we understand the accreditation status of those schools.
And typically when schools are paired in this way, unless the state is changing, unless the state makes a change, and sometimes they do, but my understanding is that typically when you pair pre-K and 3-5, then both schools will take on the status of a 3-5. So, but we'll wait to see what we have from there.
Okay.
I just want to remind us all, only those of us who have a number of decades behind us can tell you that that's not new practice. It's a practice that's been used frequently, not only in Norfolk, but in many of those schools.
Yes.
So this is, this is not brand new. This is just a, a good move to address our current situation.
Thank you.
As for the professional development for new teachers coming in, are there different things that we're doing this year for, in terms of developing these new teachers?
Right. I'm, I'm thinking that you are referring to teachers new to Norfolk.
Yes, sir.
Meaning they could be new to the profession totally.
Yes.
Or they could just simply be new to Norfolk, but they could be veteran teachers. So a part of what our plans consist of this school year going into August is a, we call a new teacher orientation process where we bring them in, we go through the steps that are necessary around professional development, around just business, day-to-day business, lesson plans, all of, all of the items that are important for them to begin to, to do their work, and then also pair them with a peer to work with them throughout the year in addition to their orientation. That whole process of providing that kind of support and resource for new teachers, teachers new to the division and teachers new to the profession is developed through our professional learning department and Dr. Corbin's people who now know if she wants to add additional comments to what I said. I think I teed it up for you just a little bit. All right. All right.
As Dr. King has stated, are new teachers new to the district whether they're first year or just simply a veteran teacher who's transferring to Norfolk, they will participate in new teacher orientation, obviously that would be 13. And new, that new teacher orientation, similar to other districts, we go through some of those operational procedures that they have to know, but they also do spend a large chunk of time working on curriculum, learning how to access the curriculum, learning how to create our lesson, lesson plans that are aligned to the curriculum. They'll also be exposed to some things such as SchoolNet and learn how to access their data and how to work with some of our other instructional tools. In addition to that week that's just for them, they also will be coming to our mandatory two days of training, which are August 19th and 20th. And I believe you're, you know, sure, you should.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you, that the- Yeah, I appreciate the, the fact that you, the difference that you made, I'm specifically speaking of new teachers who are new to the profession, and I was wondering whether we are doing anything different this year with them than what we have done in previous years. I know that we're losing a lot of young teachers, and so, yeah.
Okay. So, on the transformation, I just have two quick comments regarding the reconfigurating schools. I know Rodney had asked that we would get a report on one school so that we could kind of see specifically in, you know, one picture exactly the transformational changes that are taking place in the school so that we can really understand what does the plan look like for one particular school. And I think two of the schools that's been paired, such as Tidewater Park and PB Young, or whichever you select, would really be good to, for us to see exactly how we believe that that kind of reconfiguration, or how we plan for that reconfiguration to transform those particular schools.
Yeah, and, and really, that's in the, the structure in the, in terms of what, for example, when I use the early literacy piece for pre-K two.
Mm-hmm.
It's really the laser-like focus that we're able to give from professional learning and training for teachers to hone in on early literacy.
Right.
That's, that's the key. And how, how we are resting assured that we're providing that for those teaching staffs. With, with PB Young being pre-K two, and I'm just using that as an example, then that staff needs to receive that kind of training.
Right.
Also, we had the opportunity to send central level people too.
Mm-hmm.
Because we've got some people, some early literacy specialists, but we wanted to send some additional folk at central level so that they could, could better know how to inspect what they expat.
Right.
And so, and then the teachers also receiving that same kind of deep training as it relates to early literacy. So, but I mean, next month, I can, I can bring a, if you want, just a profile on a one particular pairing.
Right, right.
And what has been done, you know, a number of teachers and that kind of thing. I can, we can do that.
Okay.
And I think what would also be helpful with that is, perhaps by that time, we would have the individual SOL scores, and then with that plan, you would have some projections as to where you want to see those SOL scores, reading achievement, literacy rates projected over, you know, sixty days, six months, and then for the whole school year. So, I think that would be a fantastic opportunity to present that to us.
And, and then the final piece with open campus, I would just ask that if the board could be kept up to date with, you know, the big plan for open campus, the budget, staffing plan, operations plan, bridge gap contract, and transportation, if that's a part of it, that plan, so that we're kind of out in front of the matter and kind of move along with the, with the district in terms of the development.
A little unclear, Dr. King, on the hope for, not the expectation for, but the hope for on open campus. What is the hope for at this time in terms of when we might begin at some point?
Well, the hope for is to be able to begin early September. That's the hope. There, there, there are several things that must take place in order to see that come to fruition. However, you know, when you plan accordingly and you plan for Plan B, if you're not, if we're not able to, to see that come to fruition, then with the design of the school, you certainly can begin to pull case loads beyond that. That's not preferred for us in what we want to do, but that's a thought, but the hope for would be early September.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 1.03, and of course, we, we are a little behind, so I would ask us to be mindful of that in our presentation so that we provide time for our Q and A. For the strategic plan review, two, two things were part of our, our plans. One, we received information on July second relative to the first year of the strategic plan accomplishment and the focus on year two. So, any, you know, emphasis, Dr. King, that you want to provide on that would be useful in terms of the big rocks, what we accomplished this year, what, what the major focus of the second year of Phase One is. And then, of course, the Strategy Three, using as an example, I think Karen, Lisa, I think you prefer to be presenting from the end there. Okay?
If you want to speak up.
You have, you have another?
There's an electric shock, so if you don't get the right answer.
Before, before she begins, I want you to repeat what you just said, if you could.
Oh, okay. So, so, of course, there was, there was the, the request that was made, that one strategy would be selected to kind of just walk us through the action plans and measures and, and, and the performance measures. And then we had also discussed on the second, the update, he provided it to us in, in writing, the accomplishments, what we accomplished in the first year of Phase One, and then what the major focus is in, in Year Two of Phase One. We talked about trying to address both of those issues, issues today, and we, we received this information, of course, a few weeks ago. So, whatever you'd like to provide additionally on that to help us clearly understand accomplishments and focus, and then we'll move on to the Strategy Three presentation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Houston, Dr. King, and members of the board. As Dr. Houston pointed out, we have focused our information specifically on Strategy Number Three. And just a quick recap of our mission, certainly, we're having courageous conversations, talking about data-driven decision-making, looking at strong and effective leadership, as well as shared responsibility. As you are familiar with our cycle of results, and as we have talked about it all year, year long, we just wanted to make sure that this was a part of this as we think about our What you have here is just a, a quick synopsis or summary of our strategic plans for, for Year One, Year One, Two, and Year Two. We have a total of eighty-four plans, but we have a total of sixty-six plans for Year One and Year Two. And this is the breakout by strategy area, and certainly, there are thirty-one plans for Strategy Three.
All right, and as you've already mentioned, we are going to focus today on Strategy Three, which is focused on relentlessly pursuing engaged learning through high-quality instruction. We focused on this particular strategy because we really understand that it has a direct impact, for the most part, on student achievement. While we are going to give you some updates, as well as share some next steps of where we're going, we want to make sure that everyone is aware that you'll be getting additional supporting information next month when we actually have final, hopefully have final data that will support our actions that we've gone through.
What do you think about final data? Are you talking about baseline goal variance, new narrative values, and qualitative and quantitative for every action?
Talking about qualitative data in terms of SOL data and in terms of the focus walks that we have documented within talent ed that will support the action steps that we've used.
Okay, I would add, if we could, have qualitative and quantitative measures in all of those, because I think that's something that as a board, you're going to hear us repeat about eighteen times today probably, frankly.
And I'm.
That that's very much what we've been asking for, and I think we really need that in order to hone in, to know what we need to apply additional resources to or attention where we're not meeting our goals.
And I'm going to address that as we go a little bit further in where that goes within our next steps.
Okay.
And for the next few slides, I'm really not going to spend time on those because you did receive this information earlier, but so you could review and digest it, and it just gives you an update on where we are in terms of a select number of plans. We just picked a few that we have really felt had an impact on student achievement. So, if Karen will keep clicking for me, we're going to get through. One more.
One more?
Okay, one more. All right. And again.
One more?
Again, these were all plans that we have discussed throughout the year with you all, therefore, we didn't necessarily feel that we need to spend a great deal of time on those. But of the Year One, Year One, Two plans, we found that twenty-three of them had a direct impact on student achievement, two were somewhat indirect, and then there were a few that were overlapping, they were indirect, however, they were very important. And if you click again for me, you'll see that we have identified, we use this graph here because this graph shows how we are actually making progress, and if you were to think back to some of our plans, even though I did kind of go through those quickly, we just glossed over them. If you think about Plan Number Thirteen, which is again, Strategy Three, Plan Thirteen that deals with professional development for teachers, as well as Plan Six, those pertained, that pertains to teacher evaluation and deals with student academic progress, the action steps that were listed with each one of those plans had an impact on our achievement as we have done our initial analysis.
So, the question is going to be, is the impact the impact that we desired?
And that goes again, probably the next.
And you'll get, you'll get into that. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
That's where we are.
So, we, we saw progress, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the progress that we wanted to see? Is that the progress that we're shooting for?
And is that the progress of CFA's progress logs indicated for us?
And Karen, well, let's.
So, we might be asking questions that are, that are answered later, but you get where we're going.
I do, I really do. And we're, we're getting it. You go ahead.
Okay.
Now, this probably is getting directly to what you wanted to hear. What we've done so far is we went directly by what was in our strategic plan that was developed by the committees, whether it was a district committee and the subgroups that put, that came together, we've gone straight by those for Year One. At this point, what we're doing is we're actually going back and looking at our performance indicators and determining, do they tell us what we really want to get to? And when you think about a performance indicator, you have to realize that they are a form of measurement. They're used to determine whether or not the strategy is having the impact that we want, and if it is, then are we on target? If we're not, do we need to make mid-course corrections? So, one thing that we have done, one thing that we've done is we've been reviewing the one hundred fifty-seven performance indicators that are in our strategic plan. Right now, we're actually focusing on the Year Two, the ones that are listed as Year One dash two or Year Two, to see if they are smart, because we want them to be smart. And typically, when we think smart, we think of a smart goal, but again, your performance indicator is what I call a checkup. We want to make sure that they are specific, meaning they're targeted to the point that we're trying to get to. Are they measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely? One thing you have to know about a smart goal, again, is that sometimes they are qualitative, and there are instances where they can be quantitative, and we're going to talk about both of those and give you some examples. Another thing that we need to consider is that as we are, as the various people who are assigned, the groups and departments that are assigned to action plans, as they are looking at those performance indicators, we are finding that in some cases, we need, need to make modifications to the action steps, because the action steps that are listed may not get us where we necessarily need to go. So, in certain cases, we're adding additional action steps, in other cases, we are making a tweak to what was already there.
One thing I would add about that is that I was afraid to remove action steps, because there are so many, that I think simplification is a good thing.
And that, and that is occurring as well. And I just wanted to get.
Or at least prioritize.
Correct. Right.
Because I think all the action steps probably have merit, it's just that some have, are more important than others at this particular point in time.
And that was the point in us going through the exercise of identifying those that have direct impact to student achievement and those that are indirect. Certainly, professional development for teachers, some of that has a direct impact and some of that does not. Creating a, a model for program evaluation, that has a direct and an indirect impact on student achievement. The model itself is indirect, but the implementation of the model has a direct impact on student achievement as you evaluate individual programs. And so, that's what we did. We went through all of the action plans that we have and identified those that have a direct impact and those that have an indirect, which sometimes are just important as well.
And here, we're just going to give you a quick snapshot of what a smart indicator or smart goal would look like. If, for example, if you look at Example One, the percentage of all limited English proficient students scoring proficient or higher on the monthly reading common formative assessment in fifth grade will increase from fifty percent to sixty-five percent administered on August, excuse me, October second, twenty fourteen. Well, we know it's specific because you have a specific group that you're identifying, that you're focusing your, your efforts on. We also have a, we know it's measurable, we have, we're going from fifty percent to sixty-five percent, and we feel that that's some unattainable result. We also, I'm sorry, we also know that it's relevant because, again, our limited English proficient is one of our subgroups that we are focused on, making sure that they are meeting their benchmarks. Relevant, timely, all that is there. That's an example of a smart indicator. A second one, which looks a little bit different because it's focused more on adult action, the percentage of all teachers who implement the common priority strategy of summarizing and note-taking will increase from twenty-five percent to eighty percent by the end of the twenty fourteen, fifteen school year, as evidenced by the focus walk data collected by the leadership administrative team. And I just put the words formative in there because, again, when you're looking at formative focus walks, that's a form of formative data, you look at those throughout the year to help determine, are you on target with where you're trying to go? And the degree of implementation is listed in there because, again, you want to make sure that all of our teachers are doing this, so you're checking to see, not that, not just a little check in the box, how many people are doing it and are they doing it with fidelity? Now, looking at that percentage, because again, we want to be specific, you want measurable, the achievable part. You said twenty-five percent to eighty percent, and some people say that may not be an achievable or realistic point. It actually is. If you're given professional development throughout an entire year on the strategy of summarizing and note-taking, which would be one of your action steps that will support that indicator, then that really is an achievable, that is an achievable target of moving from twenty-five to eighty percent. Now, how does this relate back to our strategic plan? We gave it just a few examples of things that we've tweaked within the strategic plan to make them more, to make the performance indicators more valid and focused on where we're trying to go. Looking at Plan Thirty-Eight, which is a Year One, Two strategy, excuse me, a Year One, Two plan, the specific result for that was to expand online learning opportunities for all MPS students in K twelve. Well, the current performance indicator says that we're going to increase offerings by ten percent annually, and that's a good start, but you want to make it a little more detailed, because what is it that you're trying to increase? What type of offering are you trying to increase? How are you measuring this? And I believe that gets to the point that you were asking earlier, how do we know we're getting where we're trying to go? So, you want to revise that to make it a smart one, to say, "The number of online learning opportunities for all MPS students will increase by ten percent at the end of each academic year, beginning with the twenty fourteen, fifteen school year, as evidenced by the MPS virtual learning catalog." Now, that gets very specific and gets very measurable and, and gets to the point of where we're going, but, and I didn't put this up on the slide for you, you're going to have, as a team, and this one actually falls within, under my direction, what we had to do is sit down and talk about, let's look at these action steps, because the action steps that are listed there, they're good action steps, but one of the first things we have to do is define what do we want as a learning opportunity? Because a learning opportunity for some folks may think in terms of a virtual course. Other people may think in terms of when kids get together and they're in, doing the chats or the wikis or the blogs, and those actually are learning opportunities, because you're getting a chance to converse with one another about a common topic. But we, as a team, have to define that. So, we, again, as I said earlier, you have to go back and make some changes and tweaks to action steps to make sure your performance indicator, your action steps are all getting you back to that specific result. Okay? Here's another example. If you look at Plan Thirty-Two, which is a Year One, Two, to develop an, our specific result is to develop and, develop and integrate an academic support system for all students, both during the school day and after-school hours. Currently, the performance indicator read quarterly review of CFA analysis. Now, it's, and you have to take this for what, the way it's intended, if I go just reading quarterly review of a CFA analysis, that could really be a check-in-the-box. Does that really tell me where I'm going? No. What we want to do is we want to look at the percentage of students scoring proficient or better will improve monthly, and we could even, even improve upon that and say, improve at least by twenty percent or ten percent or something. We could tweak that and make it even better monthly on our common formative assessments throughout the twenty fourteen, fifteen school years, evidenced by the analysis of assessment data. That gets to where we want to be. It tells us what we're focusing on, and that's what the, the entire team, that's our task right now. We've been on this progress for a couple, Karen is, is the holder of most of. We've been on this progress for a couple, Karen is, is the holder of most of the records, so she can tell you, you know, different departments are already making progress towards this, and that some, some of the groups are still in the planning phase and getting their schedules together, so they can make tweaks to their performance indicators. And, let's see, here's another one, because again, not all of your performance indicators can be qualitative. So here's an example of a quantitative one. Plan Twenty-nine, again, and I stuck with Strategy Three. Year One, Two, this specific result is to secure outside funding through grant opportunities to support specific goals that relate to schools, to the districts and schools' vision and mission, with continued evaluation of current resources and other funding options. Well, our current indicator said we'll do a semi-annual review of grant submissions. Okay, that, a semi, but what are you looking for? Where are you, what are you trying to do? Now, with this particular one, we sit down, the team that I worked with sat down, and we actually looked at the action steps that were there and had to think to ourselves, okay, measurable in terms of quantitative would be a little bit challenging unless you set a goal of, we want to apply and, 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 and receive five grants that will focus on STEM, or something of that nature. That could happen, but if you wanted something that was a little general, it would be best to go with something that's quantitative, and you're going to have to spell out what it is you're actually looking for. What are you trying to get to? So, excuse me, not quantitative, qualitative. And when you look at this particular indicator, the revised version, we came up with, District Personnel will seek and share information about grant opportunities aligned to school and district needs, and will provide assistance with the application process and adherence with the grant guidelines. Now, while I was-
How is that measured?
While I was sitting there, over a few seconds ago, I looked at that, and I said, you know, when you measure that, that would have to be something that you're actually measuring in terms of using some type of a survey to see, are you looking at the support that was received? And you'd have to spell that out throughout your action steps, because one of the action steps that was listed there, go right ahead.
No, I'm listening, I just want to get in line to-
Okay.
Jump all over now.
Okay. No, because, because-
No, I just have a question.
Okay. No, because one of the action steps that was listed currently in the document actually did say that district personnel would be, would provide assistance, but what type of assistance? And how often? And who, and, and when it, again, when it came to district personnel, I think we have to do a little bit more tweaking with that, as, in my opinion, I, I wanted to respect the group that came up with it, but I think we have to do a little bit more tweaking, because when you look at district personnel, who? Because that could be, is it, are we looking at a specific department? Or are we saying that the district personnel that is most closely aligned to the grant's mission or focus? Is that who we've been looking at? There, again, this is a, a work in progress, but I wanted to give you an idea of where we're heading and the work that we are doing. And I actually had come up with another example that we kind of worked through, but I think we're going to skip that, because I feel that you all have questions, and Karen will do her best to answer them.
Absolutely. We're a team.
All right. You're under the bus.
That's what friends do.
I appreciate your, your hard work at this. I think, I think for this specific one, if you're looking for a, how to measure it, wouldn't it be an increase in the percentage of grant dollars that we, that we actually receive? Wouldn't that be a SMART, a SMART, specific, measurable result?
Right. And I think that, you know, just to interject, I think you may have multiple goals. Certainly, we need to explore areas that we have not pursued grants on, and to look at what could we possibly pursue, then look at how is it funded, to then determine what the need would be, and then what, what would be a, a reasonable goal as it relates to the financial support of that. And so, and personally, working with the department, most recently, and looking at a grant is quite involved with the Juvenile Justice Department, and a, a lot took, was involved in, in looking at that. And so, in thinking about what kind of goal could we have had, well, we're pursuing something to improve security, and it's a five-million-dollar grant, and so what are the pieces then? So, so I would say, yeah, it's multiple goals.
Others?
So, two questions. When will you have this data updated in a document such as this and/or on Board Docs that we can literally see the numericals? That's one question.
When you say numerical, you mean-
Qualitative, quantitative, that you're revising here.
Right. Certainly with respect, two percent complete, that can be done by the end of this week. The numerical pieces, Board Docs is working with us, so that we have an easier way of transitioning some of that information, like from our data warehouse, into their application, so that you could actually see that, and establishing a link, so that when one is updated, the other is updated. And we have an in-depth training schedule for August fourteenth, and certainly, you'd be welcome to sit in on that if you'd like, but to provide additional input. My understanding is that they were developing that component for us, and so we're hoping that it'll be ready for us to load data directly in. The other way that was mentioned to me, I, I did look at it a little bit, that we could complete spreadsheets that then could transition to a graph-
Right.
-inside of that component. And that would take a little bit of work to try to get that to work out, to structure it.
But in the meantime, you could update this-
Yes.
-with the more refined-
Right.
-areas of focus and their quantitative and qualitative measures. Okay, second question, baseline target goal. Are we going to go baseline goal variance? Because what's the difference between a target and a goal?
To me, I'm looking at it to be relatively the same, but I think the intent was to establish some in-between points to target, like say, for instance, if I'm at seventy, seventy percent passing, certainly my ultimate goal is to get to one hundred percent. But I may, it may be more reasonable to say that, okay, within the next three years, I will increase five or ten percentage points to get to that one hundred percent.
Yeah, I think you need a hard goal, so that you have hard variance, while you have maybe a target that's long-term, but you know in the near term, you've got to achieve something now.
Right, absolutely.
So I think that needs to be clear.
I think you talked about absolutes versus goals. I mean, Sam's talked about that in the past. It's always smart to have interim goals. I mean-
She used it in the inverse, though. She, she looked at the goal as the long range, the target as the more short range on the way to goals.
Right. And so, yeah, we could switch it, you know, whichever is-
Terminology and-
And we just need to, and we just need to know the variance.
Right. The variance between.
And then as you tighten these up, and I know that the schools now, I'm not sure if all the elementaries, middles, and highs, but somewhere in the midst, are now developing their own school-based strategic plan, right?
Yes.
So are they truly able to do that right now? If you guys are still tweaking the strategic plan, and are they using their time wisely to do that? Should you be making these changes, and should they then follow that? I just posed the question, so that nobody's doing duplication, because I know they're doing that, which is a fine thing.
Yes.
But if you're still working on the strategic plan?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I feel wholeheartedly that it is timely for them to begin that work, because what we're doing is, we're fine-tuning, we're tweaking, but it's, but the, the beliefs, the mission, the vision, the parameters, the objectives, and the strategies, those five strategies, those are the key pieces that guide their decision and their discussion. And so, as they enter into their planning at individual schools, it consists of them bringing in what we refer to as their microcosm of their communities, and they begin their discussion around their beliefs. So they will have their beliefs, and many of them already have done so in another, utilized another process, but it would be just required for them to validate that. So they revisit their beliefs, and in some cases, create beliefs that they don't have them already, move from those beliefs to that planning team that's a microcosm of their community, developing their mission and their vision, then creating their parameters. And once they move to the point of developing their strategies, what they are asked to do is to ensure that the strategies that they're creating also complements those five that we have. Now, this work deals with tweaking our performance indicators and that kind of thing, and by the time the schools do fifty percent of what I just described, we'll be ready to also alter that and give that to them, so we can still move forward in, in the time to come, because we don't want to lose that time, because we spent a year building this and, and attempting to model it for schools, so that they could see the system is doing it first, and developing an overarching philosophy and plan. So it's now time for the schools to begin to do their planning based on that same type of structure. And it's going to take, it's going to take time for them to do the, the first portion of that, which I just outlined for them, so I think it's fine.
I was pleased to see that at least one of the schools rolling with that, as they reached out to a staff member from our, I would have hoped to be a part of that team, and I had a meeting with them, that staff member met with them last week, with the principal and other members of the team.
Right.
And so I was really pleased to see that process underway.
Good, good. Yes, Ma'am.
We getting ready to conclude this section?
Yes, we, we are.
Whenever I see a thing like that, I, oh, man. Dr. King, you, you well know that at the retreat, I mentioned this, and I mentioned it a year ago, and dropped a note to this, but from my standpoint, there are about two dozen items that could easily be improved, and I know that, I'm, hopefully will work with your, your designate to assist with that. There are two policy items, Strategy Four, Plan One, and Seven, that relate to policy. I think those are kind of more important. Probably the most important are items that yet don't exist in this written document, but have been implicit over the past five, eight years of the school system. So I see this strateg, this strategic planning as a living document. I've always seen it that. And so now, a horror story. Nineteen eighty-seven, I have the honor of being the co-chair of the first National Bicentennial Commission in Alexandria, Virginia. We print over a hundred and fifty thousand copies of the Constitution, and the very first word, preamble, is misspelled. All of a sudden, if, if each item isn't perfect, and that's the twenty-four, it's a small matter, but if each item isn't perfect, if you leave out an L, it can become the most important item. I just want to make sure that this is as perfect as it can be, and I also see it as a living document.
Sure. And the, and the plan along that line is to reconvene the planning team near the beginning of the school year, a large group, and so that items such as the ones you've mentioned can come back to that planning team as a discussion item, because, and you are, you are a representative of the board for that as well. And so, once that comes back to the planning team, the appropriate groups will review those to determine where it fits in terms of strategies, endorse its addition, move forward, and bring it back to the board with those modifications. So that's the process that we plan to use.
And anything that might emerge from your master milestone conversations, whatever, could, could inform it. I see it as a living document.
Yep.
I don't want you to have to endure all the honor that I had of dealing with fifty thousand people pointing out to me that's missing out.
Okay.
Is that right?
Okay. Go ahead.
I really appreciate the smart additions that you made to the presentation, because that's exactly what I have in mind as far as our goals and our targets for the strategic plan, and what, you have, you have this in front of you.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just looking at, because I took a couple of examples, examples out myself and tried to make, which I didn't know that you were making SMART goals, but that's what I was getting at. I just didn't have the term SMART goal in it. And for page two, for example, under the column that says Specific Result, it's the, the top of the page, Year One, Strategy Number One, Action Plan Twenty-One, Provide Mentors as a Safety Net for Students. And then you have your performance indicator here, Annual Review of Mentor Program. What I had noted here was that, you know, we're reviewing the mentor program, but what are we trying to get out of the mentoring program? Is it a ten percent increase in student achievement with who they're mentoring with? So when you incorporate the SMART goals, where is it going to fall in this spreadsheet that you have here?
Well, one of the things that I have done that you may not see on your spreadsheet is I have identified data metrics.
Okay.
And so, like, for that specific one, I don't know all of the background for there, but I had indicated first, we need to know the number of mentors assigned to students via safety nets.
Uh-huh.
And so, once we know what safety nets, then we can look at those that have been assigned, and those that have been assigned a mentor, and then determine, okay, the safety net has a purpose, so that may be the, the purpose of the mentoring and the support. And so, that particular one would need more work to-
Right.
-to further define what are we trying to get to.
Right. So, so piggybacking on Courtney's question, when do we think we're going to get that into this document? Because that's really what we need, because that's how we're going to know if we're making progress, if we're not making progress, and how we're measuring ourselves.
And if not, then where do we apply the resources to the indicators?
Right. And, and that's, my approach to this was to identify first, certainly, direct impact and indirect. Direct helps to narrow down those that have direct impact. Once, and then we can identify what student achievement measure is associated with that, and then present that to see, okay, this is how it lays out, these are some areas that are associated with this. Is this, do we want to continue with this, or do we want to restructure sources or intervention somewhere else?
So do we think that by September one, we'll have that, so that we'll-
My recommendation is to make it earlier than that, we can know when we're heading to school year starts. We really do.
Yes.
We'll work to-
Yes, we're never putting you on the spot.
Yeah. The cold, the colds are getting lit.
Yes.
I, I, you know, I, I think that once we move forward, of course, with that training that's going to occur, it will, it will, it's going to make, it's going to provide a hi- higher level of efficiency for inputting the data and the changes. But I'll get, I'll have to get with everyone to determine the span of time. I don't want to say September one now, and then find that that's not a goal that we can , can meet, unless you feel that that's something that we can do by that point. I mean, we're already moving forward with it, but the thing is, I need to, need to determine for you how much is still left, and that's, that's the key.
Well, at this point, we're really looking for Year One, Two. Year One, solo, behind us. Year One, Two are the ones, and Year Two, that we need these measures for.
Sure.
And my other, my other hesitation is because I'm not sure of the exact date that Dr. Sivini has already set, in terms of having the district team come back together to review everything, so I don't want to say-
Well, I don't know that we need to wait for that, because you're setting the metrics.
Right. Right. We need to discuss with Dr. King some specifics related to this.
All right. So I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. I, I would ask, though, that let's not wait till the team gets back together, because again, the metrics should be in place already.
Yes.
And you're tightening those as we speak, so.
Yeah.
We're on the strategy, Doc.
Okay. So not only final comment, and certainly we'll receive it there, there are a couple more. When we look at, and I, and I realize how many, you know, action plans that are associated with, with these strategies, and so what, what I'm asking for may be a little unrealistic, but as we end the year, being able to really see what are those, if I may say, hugely significant goals for that particular year that were really important to accomplish in the first year, you know, which one of those did we accomplish? And then, and again, prioritizing, you know, action plans with, when you have, you know, sixteen thousand, and that may be definitely something I exaggerate, but those, those, again, those big rocks, here are the things we, we, we really got to move forward in order to stay on track for what we want to accomplish, especially as it relates to student performance in the, in, in the second year. And so at this point this year, we were able to look back and say, these twelve, these twenty things from the first year, we, 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 we met the goal, and it was directly linked to student achievement, and as a result, we expect to see outcomes related to it. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions on the strategic plan? Thank you all very much. Okay, and we're, we're back on time now. So, one point oh four, teaching and learning. And school leadership, we decided to combine these two for, for today, and they include, of course, textbook adoption, SOL results, and accountability and accreditation review. And they include, of course, textbook adoption, SOL results, and accountability and accreditation review. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of board, teaching and learning and school leadership development in reference to textbook adoption and preliminary SOL will be presented. And I will defer to Dr. Corbin.
Good afternoon again. This afternoon, I have with me our senior coordinator of English, Monica Robinson, who took the helm and ran through things as far as our textbook adoption. As you may recall from last month's work session, we got a little behind in terms of the timeline that's normally adhered to for adopting textbooks because of all of the snow days and makeup days. So this month, Monica will share with you our selection and hopefully you will approve it.
Good afternoon? Yes, good afternoon. One of the things that we wanted to do is to make sure that we were able to, as you know, we were able to get the new textbooks for elementary K through twelve. And we wanted to ensure that we were able to get textbooks for our secondary classrooms as well as they had not had replacements in almost seven years. And we know that with the standards having changed over that period of time, we needed books that met and were aligned with the current standards of learning for Virginia. And so, we made several considerations in trying to determine what type of textbook we wanted to go with. And so some of the considerations that we looked into were the online access to teacher and student textbooks and resources. We wanted to make sure that the textbooks could be available and the resources on CD, e-readers, iPhones, laptops, whatever mode the students had. And also that we could purchase class sets for all of our teachers. This was an important consideration because many of our students are tech savvy and the ability to access the textbook on their iPhones and iPads was very important. Also, the textbooks with the more resources that you have, the larger the textbooks are. And so if we could keep the students from having to carry the heavy textbooks back and forth from school to home and be able to access it online, we also thought that would be beneficial. And I know Dr. Corbin reviewed the process last time. I'm just gonna go over it quickly. The state of Virginia provides us with a list of what they have, books that have approved based on their alignment with the state standards. They do approve books that are not one hundred percent aligned to the standards. It may be ninety-five percent or eighty-five percent, but it's close. But for our district, we wanted to make sure that we stuck with books that were one hundred percent aligned. And so from there, that narrowed it down to three vendors. We asked that the vendors provide each of our middle schools and high schools with sets and samples of not just the books, but the resources so that our teachers and our administrators could review them. We also asked several of our local libraries if we could put them on display there along with our survey so that we could also get community feedback. We met with the vendors so that they could present the materials that came with the book as well as how to use the textbooks and the other resources. In the past, we developed a committee to kind of look over the books. But we really wanted with our high schools, the number of teachers in our high schools and middle schools being smaller than in our elementary, obvious, we wanted to open it up to everyone. And so we invited administrators, teachers, and staff to come to the presentations. And so they could ask questions, we could talk about teacher needs as well as what the administrators see as possible needs for their teachers. And this was an excellent idea because what came of that was that the vendor had to then go back and make some adjustments to meet the needs of our teachers. For example, one of the things that our teachers asked for was an alignment between the standards and where in the textbook they could find it. For example, if I was teaching SOL six point nine, where in the teacher edition and in the student edition is that standard and that skill addressed? And so the vendor was very, Holt Madugal, which is the company that we would like to propose, they created that for us so that the teachers could have that accessibility. Also, because we're looking at both a literature textbook and a grammar and writing textbook, the teachers also wanted to be able to see how those two textbooks come together. And so they created another crosswalk for us that aligned the literature textbook, the writing textbook, and our standards. And we're gonna, once this is approved, we'd like to make that a part of our curriculum because it's an excellent resource for the teachers to make sure that they know exactly where all of their resources are. The textbook strengths for both the writing and the reading textbook, that they come in both print and electronic teacher and student texts, they're aligned to both the Virginia and the Common Core standards. Now, even though we're dealing with the Virginia standards, because we know typically because of finances, we keep a textbook five to seven years. The change could occur and we may go to Common Core. So we wanted to make sure that the textbooks that we purchased would still be able to be used even if we went to a Common Core framework. Also, we wanted to make sure that the strategies, guides, activities really honed in on those critical thinking skills. Although we don't ask that, or we don't encourage our teachers to give the questions right at the end of the story, we wanted to make sure that for our new teachers and for our teachers who lack the capacity to develop their own activities, that the activities that come with the textbook are on the cognitive level of our standards. And then again, the crosswalk and that we alluded to a few moments ago, that they created for us. And then the final note, and this was important, with this particular textbook vendor, they were willing to collaborate with us in terms of the PD. Oftentimes, they have a cookie cutter professional development model and they really take teachers from the beginning of the book to the end of the book and show them those resources. Well, that's not how we teach. Our framework is based on the state framework and those skills and content. And so we wanted to make sure that they would collaborate with us and that they would teach them in accordance with our state and local framework and not just taking them through the beginning to the end of the textbook. And so that was very important. This is an example of some of the online resources that come with the writing textbook and also with the reading textbook. Again, we talked about the technology desires of our students. This particular program, the online, the students have their own little blog or website. They can create their own avatar. And what I really like about this and is that, let's say you have a student struggling with subject verb agreement. The teacher can load extra activities for subject verb agreement onto that student's individual site. So that student can get those extra resources without the embarrassment of the teacher saying, look, you need more help. Let me hand you another handout. Also, for our teachers, there's an electronic file cabinet where they can drag and drop all of the activities and resources they want to use for a particular unit. And they can share their file cabinet with other students, with other teachers. And that's important because we know we have teachers who have a great deal of capacity and those who don't. So now our teachers who have the most capacity can kind of share the resources that they've selected to use with their peers. And we thought that was a great idea as well. Again, the strengths for the writing textbook are very much the same as the ones for the reading textbook with the online ability. With the writing textbook, there's also an online portfolio and a writing assessment tool. And then the rest of the strengths are the same. Any questions? Yes.
I want to consider a classroom set number wise.
A classroom set would be, usually we do a set of thirty. And that allows us, if the classes are smaller or larger, that they can shuffle the books around within a building. Now, also in the budget, we are asking for additional textbooks for those students with disabilities that have to have the textbook at home, or those parents who just choose to have their student bring the textbook home.
So do you think we'll be able to accommodate that though? Will we be able to accommodate all parents who want a textbook at home?
We really don't have that many on the secondary level that would request it.
The secondary level, okay.
Yeah, this is the secondary, yes.
Okay. Okay. And with this company, every student who has an electronic device will be able to get this book onto their device. We don't have to pay any extra licensing software.
No, it's online. So it's not anything that has to be, a program that has to be loaded. It's an online venue. Yes.
So this is English and writing.
Yes, ma'am.
Are these the only kind of new school, subject matters that we're addressing this year in terms of textbooks?
That's right.
And what's the cycle for when we adopt new textbooks?
Generally, we adopt new textbooks every three to five years. But it depends on the budget if we can actually get them.
Okay. So when you started your presentation, you indicated it had been seven years, I think, since we had started with English. So you all targeted English for obvious reasons because it was so outdated, I guess?
Yes.
And we've actually created, in my job, we've created a table of dates and times of when you were last adopted. You actually went through an adoption so that we can keep everyone on even scale. So we're trying to decrease that number. And again, we work very closely with our friends in budget and finance to make sure that we can accommodate our needs.
And this may be totally oversimplifying, but who is it that validates this company called Holt that aligns the content to the SOL number?
The Virginia Department of Education has their own committee that reviews the books. I guess when these books were first reviewed, it was about three or four years ago. And they had the books at all the major universities and we were able, as well as the community, to go in and offer our feedback to the Virginia Department of Education. And then from there, they come up with a list that we review.
So there's an action, action we need to take.
Yes.
On these particular textbooks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we will tee that up for the formal session. Are there any other questions that need to be?
Just one quick question. I assume then, when we say yes, these will be ready for this school year?
That's what we're, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll continue on with the SOL results discussion.
Good afternoon again. Every year, we get to this point where we share our preliminary SOL student performance. And some of that information has already been shared with you. And today, we're just sharing a little bit more. The state has provided us with accountability report timeline. And as you can see, there is some preliminary information that will be shared with us the middle of next week. And from that process, we will be looking at that as it, we filter it down to our administration as well as our cabinet members as we review the information. You can also see that on August twenty-seventh is when there will be a press release and that is when they will give out state and division pass rates. And along with that usually is individual school information. So at the district level, we collapsed the data up to the major subject areas, teasing out English writing because that is not included in our federal accountability system. But we wanted to highlight that this is the second year that we are being assessed on the more rigorous standards preparing students for college and career readiness. Looking at our end of course subjects, we have also collapsed the same information. And included in our, in some of our end of course subjects are our middle school student performance. And again, two years of the more rigorous standards, even though we have three years displaying here. This particular chart of information is something that you have already seen and seen the trend. So looking at a graphical illustration of our middle school students, what I have done here is that I have added in their end of course performance. They participate in Algebra One, Geometry, Earth Science, Biology, and World Geography. And you can see their performance over time and how that is impacting student performance. Again, a similar chart of information that you have seen. And all of this information certainly is preliminary until the state says that it's final. This is our elementary performance and you can see that they have, show improvement in three out of the four areas. And this is the second year of the more rigorous standards. And certainly, it is the first time for our third graders participating in the SOL testing. Elementary performance in a trend format. And then in summary, I think that we, Dr. King, may have already shared with you that we showed improvement in twenty-four out of our thirty-four areas. We are working with our curriculum and instruction folks as well as select other individuals to look at what took place throughout the year and how that they feel it impacted student performance. A lot of that information will be shared with you next month as we break it down by individual school level and looking at certainly our priority and focus schools. And so I know that that was really quick at this time. Oh, I'm sorry. I had one last slide. And that was the Graduation Completion Index, which is a part of our school accreditation for our high schools. And we feel very positive about the results that we have seen. Our graduation coaches that have been in place since two thousand and twelve, I believe, have worked very hard to bring students back into the academic area and help them to be successful.
Well, I first was very thrilled seeing how the testing results came back and they were in a positive trend. And I think that that is a, an example of how hard you all have been working over the past year or two on aligning the curriculum with the SOLs, breaking that down for the teachers, the teachers performing the instruction, and the students getting used to all of the rigorous requirements, the computer-based testing that they're having to deal with. So I applaud the district for the improvement that we've seen. So along the same lines of the expectations that we have with the strategic plan, if we start with the Graduation Completion Index, my question is going to be, we saw a gain in many of our schools. So what are we gonna project for this year? What are the targets that we want to achieve this year based on the involvement of our graduation coaches, based on the involvement of online courses, et cetera? So maybe what we can do is add in an extra column here to say, you know, two thousand and fifteen.
Projections.
Projections. You know, what are we shooting for? And then you had mentioned that next month, you're gonna come back after reviewing with individual schools how different things impacted what they thought were gains, or maybe even losses in some of their testing. And I would, I would like to specifically have some type of data on the impact of the math and reading specialists. In a general sense, we, we as a board never really set goals for what we wanted our SOL results to look like in the coming years. I think what we needed to first do was to allow Dr. King to come in and figure out what was the problem and then work on the solutions. And obviously, you guys are doing a very good job of that right now. So now, I think, is an appropriate time for us to say to ourselves, well, in English, our percent passage rate was eighty-seven percent. Where do we want to see ourselves next year? And not just as an overall number, but where do we want to see the kids who are high achievers? Where do we want to see them achieving? Where do we want to see the different breakdown? Those students who are receiving free reduced lunch, you know, where do we want to see them? So I think that this year, we need to be able to set these goals and see if we can achieve them. So.
Along that line, of course, we know that improvement increases. Of course, those are things that are positive and should be celebrated. However, we always, always talk about the fact that we're starting from a certain point. And many times, the absolute that we're striving for is still a steep climb. And so however, progress is progress and that needs to be celebrated. And at the same time, ramp it up to the point of seeing it accelerate in terms of rate of growth. So if we use this example that you see on the screen, which would be the Graduation Completion Index, and remember that it is preliminary because this is, these are our internal projections. that it is preliminary because this is, these are our internal projections, et cetera, and that if this holds to be pretty accurate, then we're looking at the gains that have been made across high schools' graduation rates. And it will allow us to develop a goal in what I refer to as the aggregate for high school. In other words, here's where we are. And if you take that and look at that from an average standpoint, we're around maybe 86, 87% if that holds true. And so if that's the case in the aggregate for, for the system at high school level this year, what do we want to establish as a goal for growth by the end of the school year next year? And then also see individual schools do the same thing. And if, for instance, Booker T. is going to end up at 85% for this year, what is a good, smart goal for them for the following year? We are really positioning ourselves to begin to do that at, for elementary in the aggregate, aggregate, middle in the aggregate across subjects, and high school. The other piece, too, is that that's a, when you talk about the aggregate, that's the total student population. But then, we need to disaggregate that data down to, down to each one of those subgroups to say, though the aggregate is here, what was the graduation rate for this particular subgroup? Or how did this particular subgroup perform in math? And know where they are and have a goal for growth for all of those, including economically disadvantaged, including gifted, including SWD from where they are. Because all of those subgroups really land us at this level from an aggregate standpoint. And so, and that's what we were discussing, as a matter of fact, in terms of how to do that, disaggregate for the system, but also provide it in a way that schools are setting their goals in the same fashion.
I too was very pleased to see the progress moving forward, especially in the fact that it was year two at the more rigorous standards. So I thought that was great. And I appreciate the proactive nature with your communicating these to all of us. I think that's wonderful for the community, the children, parents, teachers, and all, to be well versed in where we are when we know it. So I applaud you for that. Just urge you to continue to share the content and information with us when you can, so that we are certainly not surprised by any means, and that we can use the data in the most effective way. Having said that, let me just ask you, I'm very puzzled by history, and maybe you won't be able to answer that today, but history's not new curriculum. We've always had strong history, and yet I've seen a slight dip. Now, it may not be statistically significant, but it's a dip. When we know that in a year or two, when DOE decides to roll out new curriculum, that's going to even be more rigorous. So we're going to have to swing back up, potentially take another dip, though, when the new rhetoric comes out. Thoughts?
And I believe, and this is just anecdotal from talking to various folks, a lot of our teachers put an emphasis at the elementary level, particularly on looking at the reading and the math, because those were new curriculums. And what, you take your focus off of something, something else has to slide a little. But we are, we've already started doing that analysis and getting some professional development together. We've got the plan mapped out to kick it back into high gear.
And then do we know, I think you had mentioned a few meetings ago, was DOE going to delay the rollout of the new history curriculum?
Yes. It, the timeline continues to change. And right now, they're in the process of still vetting on the, the standards and, and the curriculum itself. And we have not received a final notice of when we should expect to see that new document put out. So we're, we're waiting. And our senior coordinator of history is Bruce Brady, and he has been going to the state meetings and working with a local group of, of his peers to see if they're getting any new information, because we want to stay on top of that. But we don't have anything new at this moment.
Could it even be this year, and they would notify you between now and the start of school year? Or does there reach a point where they can't do that this close to the start?
If, if anything, it's unlikely that anything will come out for this particular school year. If anything did come out, it would just be a draft version for us to preview and to, just so the teachers become, become familiar with it. But it would not be for implementation.
Are we going to see any comparisons between the CFAs benchmarks and then what the SOL scores are?
In looking at that, certainly, our CFAs, the structure that we put in place is new last year, preimposed. And in prior years, we were able, we had enough testing to have occurred over years to be able to use that as a predictor of performance. Because our structure is new this year, we're having to collect data as we go along. And eventually, we will be able to do a direct correlation of that. But this was the first year of our preimposed assessments. We have to go back and look at how reliable were they? While we know at the item level, which would be the test question itself, is valid and reliable, the overall test itself, did it tell us what we wanted it to do? And so, along with all of the other analysis that we're doing at this time, we will be incorporating that, you know, it's, it's a very in-depth conversation that has to take place to, to look at that, certainly by subject grade level, and then specific item. Our CFAs or our, our district CFAs look at mastery. Certainly, the SOLs look at minimum competency. So you can't do certainly a direct correlation, but over time, you can collect enough information to predict. But I would say that what we have at this time, it gives us a feel-
Right.
-for how students are performing. Are we able to do all, perform all of our psychometric properties, which is analysis of the test format and everything? We're not able to do that at this time because we don't have enough. We can do a little bit, but not enough.
And I'm assuming that, starting in September, all the students will undergo another pre-assessment test. So that, that is the plan?
That is the plan.
Okay.
So can you talk a little bit more about what you attribute the reasons for the growth that we've seen, and maybe what may have prevented greater growth?
I would say, in general, we're still having conversations with our content coordinators, as well as other select individuals in dealing with schedules for the summer, to, to really refine and look deeper. Certainly, we feel that, in a general sense, our professional development and working with teachers, certainly, our teachers are on the front line and working with students. Safety nets, remediation, acceleration, certainly all play a role in that. And so it would vary by content and grade level. And so that is some of the information that we hope to share with you next month as we talk about individual school performance.
And I had run across this report, I guess it must have been the first year I was here. It had breakdown by school, number passed, number failed, number tested, percent passing, and so forth. Is that something that's going to be available soon?
Certainly, we, yes, we can provide that to you.
Okay.
Would you like that at the school level or just at the district level?
I don't know, little boy, I mean, personally, I like it at the school level. And, oh, and just in your, in some of your early review, just from a board perspective, either from support and resources that you all feel you may need to help with some of the analysis that they were asking you to do, or even going back to the safety nets and some of the things that you mentioned earlier. So anything right now that, from a board perspective, that you think we can begin to give consideration so that as you move forward in the, in the new year, and especially as we get to talk about budget early, is there anything that's kind of hanging out there right now that you all feel we should be giving some attention to to help shore up and support the work going forward?
Certainly, I would love a lot more staff, Dr. King. And so certainly, we're having internal discussions at this time to look at the structure of support for some of this information that you all are asking us for.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, then finally, on this, under this area, school leadership accountability and accreditation plan review. Okay. All right, then we're moving on to, so nothing from leadership at all?
No, that was just part included in what you just got.
Okay, all right. All right, 1.05, school board policy review. So we met with, and I know these policies are from under Dr. Lance's shop. And we did have a meeting with Mr. Cloud to review these policies. And we've all received the updates and recommendations and so.
Yes.
And I've also received emails relative to a couple of them. And as we get to each of the policies, we'll talk about some of the feedback we've already received and what your, what your, what your pleasure is. I'd also be interested, Dr. Lance, if you could let us know about time sensitivity, whether related to the student-
Court of Conduct.
Court of Conduct, yes.
Yes, sir.
So if, if there's a time sensitivity related to that, please let us know that. Okay. Since Mr. Cloud isn't here, I'm going to turn it over, Sam, to you and to Dr. Lance, and we'll just walk down each, each of the policies. And you can just give us an update on whether it's a statutory change, minor wording change, or whatever.
Chairman Hughes, members of board, of course, we have several items that fall under the category of student support services. And as you alluded to earlier, the discussions have taken place prior to today. And we're ready to give you an update and reference to whether we're looking at a modification or a new policy or, and, or how it compares to where we are currently and how it links to our strategic plan and the work that we have. So with that, Dr. Lance?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. We'll start with policy JBECA, which is the electronic cigarettes. And we'll move down the list. And while Mr. Cloud isn't here with us, Mrs. Carol Hamlin, who also works in the Department of Student Support Services, will be joining us to address the JCAAZ policy. And Mr. Sutton Miller will be joining us to address the student athletic concussions. As far as the electronic cigarettes, the new policy, it prohibits the use of electronic cigarettes on school property. And it is a policy that we recommend that the VSBA, the Virginia School Board Association, policy be adopted. But it would be a brand-new policy for our school district addressing specifically the prohibition of electronic cigarettes on school property.
Okay, any questions about this policy at all?
Okay. Next, we'll address JCAAZ, alternative school placement. And then also the regulation related to the alternative school placement of students. And what took place with the alternative school placement policy was just a change where, after discussing this with Mr. Cloud, a more detailed statement was placed into the policy and moved up where it would be a little more prominent in terms of its location in the policy. So there was not much that changed in that case, but this policy has been in place for some time. And again, we recommended that a, a portion of the policy just be moved further up in terms of addressing the involuntary disciplinary transfer of students and other students related to alternative school placements in our district.
Okay. Of course, along with the policy, the division has developed a regulation that, of course, provides guidelines, and they carried out an application of the policy. Any questions or comments or discussion relative to, to this policy or the regulation?
I have questions on the regulation, but do you want to start? I don't have any questions on the policy. Do you want to start there first?
Yeah, then, okay, we'll start there. Are there, any questions at all on the policy itself?
In terms of the changes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so in terms of the regulation, I'm looking at the draft. Under procedures for involuntary transfer of students to an alternative setting, first, sub bowl of the superintendent receives notification of court-involved students. Is there any way we can tighten it up to understand the timing of that? Yes, ma'am. We, we can. The, currently, we receive the information related to juveniles in a relatively timely manner. But we've been in discussion with the other parties in terms of who would provide this, the juvenile court, as well as the police department, and they are- And the Commonwealth Attorney's Office as well? Yes, ma'am, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the clerk of the juvenile court, the police chief, and the clerk of the court services unit also. And plan to, we've already talked to them about doing that, but they can provide the information in a timely manner as soon as they have it. Currently, they get the information to us related to juveniles, and as soon as they can get it, but they can expedite, expedite that even further. But, you know, we have students that aren't juveniles. So for those that are 18-plus, what is the timeliness of the notification? And can we tighten that up in here? Yes, we've talked to, and this is addressed, and there's a specific statute that addresses the police department or the particular entity that would provide that information to the superintendent's office. And so we've talked to them, and we'll be meeting with them in a few days about a process to further define what that can be. But they've said, without a doubt, they can give that to us in this timely manner in terms of, you know, within a very short period of time, from the time they receive the notification. Yeah, I think we really need to stress that that become timely and not a few days or an overnight or whatever, but, you know, concurrent to when it's- Yes, they- -in the court system. They shared with us that they could get that to us pretty, almost immediately once they have notification of that particular type of reportable crime. Yes, ma'am.
It sounds like to me that a part of the discussion is their review of the statute related to law enforcement and communicating that to the school district.
Right, right. And the, the statute addresses the requirement for them to report that to the superintendent. But as you suggested, we can further specify that, you know, if possible, to receive that within, you know, 24 hours or 48 hours, whatever would be feasible with the police department. But I have spoken directly to the police chief's representative, and there is a meeting planned. The second sub bowl of the superintendent's designee will review the case to determine if the student shall be placed in an alternative setting. I don't want to assume here, but I do think Dr. King has a role in seeing all this information. So while, Dr. Lance, you might be the one that's the designee, some of these matters, I do think, reach the level where Dr. King needs to be certainly well-informed and ultimately potentially making the decision. They, or either concurs with your decision or recommendation, or am I not, or whomever, or whatever. You get my point. In terms of us meeting with Dr. King directly about the specific cases, which we-
Part of the process.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and that's part of the process.
Because that's not clear in the second sub bowl. Okay, okay. That needs to be clear. Okay.
Of course, he paused it for a moment.
Yes.
Because one of the things that I just wanted to try to get an understanding of, of the process. So I was hoping that you could just walk us through what's the, what the, what the process is. Because I'm, I did like you did and tried to go through the, I mean, I, I just can't figure that out. So if you all could just kind of just explain to us what a normal process would be, and then to whatever extent that we may have had some improvements made over what's existing to close any holes or loopholes that we thought we may have had, how the current, how the new process then helps to address perhaps loopholes that may have existed in the, in the past. So I'd still like to get some overarching explanation of the process and not just try to go through line by line the regulation.
What I was going to say about just basically sampling, how the information traveled and actually.
Yes. And I mentioned that Ms. Carol Hamlin would be joining us also. Ms. Hamlin worked to help to put together the procedures and worked with Jack Cloud also, along with me, to put the regulation, the proposed regulation in place. So prior to, when I mentioned earlier that this policy has been in place for some time, and we do have and have had the ability to actually place students based on being the designees for the superintendent to place students in alternative, in an alternative setting. Prior to this time, at least for the last several years, our school district has not actually utilized or employed this particular policy to place students into this particular setting. So as we've looked into this several years ago, also, Mrs. Hamlin and I worked to put together a regulation and then have here recently tried to update that information. But in terms of looking at how we would do that from this point forward, we have not, though, as I mentioned in the past, we have, we have for years received the notifications for, related to students who could be considered students on voluntary or an involuntary transfer. But we have not actually utilized those particular procedures. And so what we're doing today is with this regulation is we've updated those procedures. I mention all of that so that we can share with you what the process is that we might have proposed in the past and that we have fine-tuned for this point today. And so our students, as you know, if they're students who, juveniles or adults- And so our students, as you know, if they're students who, juveniles or adults, who have, we've received reportable crime notices about those students have and could continue in our regular schools or based on other circumstances related to infractions that occur within the school would be placed in our alternative setting. We have, as you know, been doing that for, you know, for some time. And so, Ms. Hamlin, I don't know if you'd like to walk through in terms of the general procedures for what we are proposing for the regulation, which again, we have looked at in the past, but now would like to move forward where we are today.
Yes, we do receive the notifications from the juvenile courts and are fine-tuning the notification that comes from the police department. When that notification is received, it is reviewed and we've started that process even to kind of go back and look at the ones that we've received this school year to just kind of review where the students are, pull the codes, to see if they're basically, if already placed in a maybe a state facility and if not, then to look at where they are presently and will make a determination as we move forward, especially based on the type of crimes that they are, they've been charged with. And the policy does say it can be charged with or convicted. Quite a few of our students are involved in, you know, different crimes, but we've selected certain ones after talking to Dr. King to make sure that we look at those immediately and consider placement as we move forward. There are some that came in as recently as a couple of days ago, which means these are crimes that have been committed recently, so as we move into the new school year, this is a perfect opportunity to, you know, look at that information. We pull the information on the student, their face sheet, their status. It gives us a lot of information so that we can make contact with maybe the probation officer to see where they are in the process, as well as pulling their discipline data to see if there's anything that relates to the crime that may have taken place in the community and things that have happened in our schools. And with that, we're pulling that together right now and preparing it to review with Dr. King for those that are presently, you know, under the court's supervision.
To understand that prior to, there was no formal regulation that was followed, is what I hear you saying, and so are you wanting to know now exactly what the steps would be and of course, this regulation to be walked through, what would happen from the time of notification?
Yeah, I think I'm following that. I just wanted to make sure because one for our benefit and two, public have opportunity to understand what we're talking about, because they may not be reading this, just to understand that and even, I know in some of the recent conversations we've had around the definition of alternative setting, right? So I think the tendency is we think Madison or we may think trade, but what are all the, you know, what are some, is there a listing of alternative settings that this regulation applies to beyond, beyond those?
The alternative setting will center on what's most appropriate for that particular situation. So each one will be handled in isolation. And so you're right, many times people will automatically assume that it's Madison. Many times it will be, but there could possibly be other circumstances around occurrences like this where maybe you have a special needs child, that kind of thing, that once the review has taken place, it may be determined that the recommendation is that Madison is not the appropriate setting. I'm just using that as an example. But once notification comes to us, then the Student Support Services Department will begin its review of each and we've even outlined some particular descriptors for incidents that would really rise to a level of high priority. All of them would be priority, but there are certain that we, certain ones that we would definitely have on radar to do first. Sometimes when you have an onslaught of those, I know that when you all years back, prior to my arrival, discussed this, they were so numerous until they were trying to determine how to go about doing that and there was no regulation, which means an administrative practice to do so. So now what we have is a regulation that we feel that will begin to allow us to have leverage and movement around when these, when these reports are coming to us, do the review on each particular student, determine the severity, determine what's appropriate and also keeping a finger on the pulse of wanting to continue the educational process where appropriate and prudent when safety of staff and students may not be the issue because this is something that is taking place away from school. So we want to be careful that we dot I's and cross T's with the review. So once they do that review, with all those things in mind, then that comes to me and we have a joint discussion about the recommendation and move forward from there. And so many times, you know, there, there really would be a myriad of examples that one could consider that could happen. So sometimes a student is incarcerated, but at the same time that the student might be incarcerated, we can move forward with our discussion. So hopefully when the student is released and our decision is already made and we've notified the family and we can, we can move forward with that. So you, you want to pick up from there or add to it or whatever?
Does that satisfy you? Because I want to, I want to keep us on time here.
If I could say, I think there's three or four big buckets that I'd like to share with you that I'd like us to consider. Not all infractions take place in the Commonwealth of Virginia, so we need to be sure the policy and the regulation apply to a student, a juvenile or an adult, regardless of location of the infraction. Right now, I see it as to be disclosed to the superintendent under the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I just think we need to be mindful that not everything happens in ours that good. Secondly, timing is key for me. I think we need to have timely notification. Third, I think Dr. King needs to be involved at the get-go and have heavy input into the decision. And then someone else had mentioned this and I had written this down as my notes, I think we need to consider whether or not these children should be able to engage in extracurricular activities in the course of all of this consideration. And that needs to, I think, be explicitly spelled out. So I think those are my big buckets and I appreciate the fact that we are putting pen to paper and making this regulation tight. I think that's important and then we need to communicate this to the community, the so on and so forth. I think it's important.
You also remember that this is a regulation and, you know, administrative procedures drive that and we don't have action on regulations, but the regulations that we develop should support the policies that the board develops. And I'm on the same page with what you're saying and those are the things that we considered as this regulation was being developed and so we'll continue with that.
So going back to the policy then, if, if the board wants to see the issues around extracurricular activity and those things addressed, then are you recommending that we modify the policy or set a policy in that regard that then helps guide the regulation or is it more appropriate for it to be in your regulation, but you, but you hear from the board what our sense is around, you know, what we would like to see? I'm not sure.
Well, of course, the board has total autonomy on policymaking, so let me say that first. Secondly, in reference to this, this particular regulation, each of these will have different variables attached, okay? And so you can't second guess or anticipate what they may be, you know? And so we have to do a review of those to determine what's appropriate for all parties. And so when you mentioned would not be involved in extracurricular activities, then that means during the review process, et cetera, that kind of thing, we can look at from a regulation standpoint, spelling that out, that as the review is taking place, that the students will not, the student will not be allowed to be involved in extracurricular activity. However, I believe, and you are correct me if I'm wrong, with the regulation as it is written, the student wouldn't be able to because we would be, we would be. So I feel as if that's addressed in what we have, but if you think that we need to word it to make it clear?
Maybe it's just understanding that. So say that again, you're saying in the current regulations that you have?
Yeah, the process would not allow for the student to be involved in extracurricular activities because during that review process, so you may want to weigh in on that, what happens during the review process where the student will be housed at that time because sooner we're not being home schooled while it takes place.
Right, they'll be, they'll be notified, the parents will be notified, but as the regulation reads, it says that while this is all going through the process, the student is placed in the alternative setting. So once they're in an alternative setting, they're not part of the participation in any extracurricular activities, whether, you know, be Madison or trade.
Right, now if we feel that that's not clear in what's written, then, then I would agree that maybe we would want to tweak the language in that to, so that everybody would understand that during that review they would not be, because then once, once, once they are reported to us, the review begins, automatically the student is removed from that setting. So when that student is removed from that setting, which is the home school setting, they're not allowed in extracurriculars during the process while the review is taking place. So I feel that it does what you are requesting, but maybe we need to consider spelling it out clearly and give a more clarity to that so that there are no questions about that.
Well, I think just having the conversation just cleared it up for me. So it wasn't, you know, I'm not, I'm not inverse like you all are, but having.
But there's still one assumption, that there's timely notice of us knowing. And so if we don't know, then the process doesn't ensue.
Not if we don't, if it hadn't been reported to, we would know.
Right, and that's back to what you mentioned.
They've had that discussion, I mean, we talked about that at a meeting and she's mentioned that, you know.
Right.
And that's part of. Court services and chief of police and the insurance office.
That's been part of the discussion with all of those entities and will be part of the meeting that I mentioned as well to further define that so that we can make sure that that's tight, because we wouldn't know yet.
Brad and then Brad.
That begs the question of what is the alternative setting? And that's why I'm going back to that question, because if the alternative setting is Madison and trade, I can see where there, the extracurriculars would be automatically discontinued. If the alternative setting is something modified within the home school, then that, does that change or doesn't change?
That wouldn't happen, not the home school, no.
So they're going to be taken out of the home school?
Yeah, alternative setting.
Okay, well, that's.
Yes.
Alright, that, that, I just wasn't clear to me, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Can do, Ellen, did it?
Just wanted to know whether the capacity of Madison would limit your policy. It looks like we'd have many more referrals to Madison as a result of this sort of replacement.
We certainly would have to monitor that. We, you know, we added the option of being able to utilize trade, so that helps us. So, you know, I feel as if we would probably be in pretty good shape right now with that, but you're right in that we would have to monitor the number of referrals and the case load as we have students placed there. And then it will allow us to, that if we are moving close to what we consider capacity or our limit, then we have to look at expanding some slots at trade over beyond what we already have. So I think we have a pretty good handle on that.
Just a note thinking ahead, since we do have an overage for grade concern here, if we do have an overage for grade student in elementary school that would commit a horrible crime and we're thinking of an alternative setting, right now we don't have an alternative setting for them. So I'm just thinking ahead, at some point in time, we'll have to figure out, you know, what we would be doing.
He's an elementary kid.
Right, he was overage in elementary school, you know.
Right.
Where would they be placed if, if we're going to take them out of their school setting? Because right now, all we do is we put them in a designated elementary school.
Right.
We have funding this year for a position and have already interviewed and so have a location, so our plan is to have a separate site prior to the start of school and we're actively making those final plans now. So that would cover any of these elementary school students as well as our students that you're familiar with that may be placed on long-term suspension, a long-term suspension with special conditions and the quadrant schools in the past.
And that, and that going back to an old policy that we have or overseas? We had that before budget considers.
Okay, yes, Ron.
Can you remind me again, once students are placed in the alternative setting and you have students that have been involved with weapons, drugs and acts of violence and students who may be in an alternative setting that don't fall in that category, assuming that there are any? How has that been handled inside of the alternative setting in terms of students that may have been involved in one of these serious violent scenarios being, are they segregated from others or how does that shift trade?
Yes, most of the time when we have students that have been involved in very serious crimes, then we usually place those students at trade because it's even a more, I guess, secure type of environment structured, yes.
So going back to Reverend Hable's question, there's not a, with, you don't anticipate a space issue there?
Well, we have a lot of slots that we've already paid for that are at trade, so we should be finding, we monitor it, you know, constantly, so our office is responsible for the placement of students at trade, so we keep a running count of how many slots we have and how many students we have currently placed there.
Any others? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next.
Just for clarity, Dr. Houston, so is this one of those time-sensitive policies that you mentioned earlier?
Right, so does this reflect the student code of conduct that has to go out in terms of this time sensitivity?
Right, we're fine as far as that's concerned. Those final changes are being made now, but they will, we will be okay as far as the timeline for the printing of any.
Well, the reason it came up is because I suggested in the email earlier that I thought that this and another policy maybe should have opportunity for being out for public review for a few days before we adopt it and I think that's the basis for the, for the question. So I don't know what your timing is, so I know right now on the agenda is for us to vote on this today. If we didn't vote on this today, what does that do in terms of your, your time sensitivity issue?
We normally have in the past printed, finalized right around this time in the next several days, next week or so finalized everything for the student conduct handbook so that we could move forward with printing since, as you can imagine, it takes quite a while. And so we've always had the document prepared so that it's ready for distribution in August for training and ready to distribute to all students prior to the start of school. And so, for example, if there are items, unless we did things differently, if there are items that were not available and ready, you know, at this particular meeting or by, within the next week or so, waiting until the August meeting would put us behind the regular schedule for printing. We do have the opportunity, as you know, to update things on the internet, but we have avoided at all costs making changes to the written document after the start of a school year or after distributing it because it causes confusion, you know, for the practices and procedures and policies in place that parents and students are aware of when school starts.
So what would, what would the process be if the code of conduct is adopted and printed and for some reason during the year, the board decided to modify the policy or anything got modified that impacted the code of conduct? What would be the process then for notifying the parents and the students about that?
We have refrained from doing that. What we have done in the past is, I mean, we, throughout the year, there may be feedback that we receive, additional things that have to be updated and Mrs. Hamlin and other staff members in our department normally will collect that information and will prepare it and compile it for review in preparation for the following school year's document. I can think of maybe one rare occasion where we made adjustments because it causes issues. I know we've had, you know, even to look at consistency of practices and certain legal matters related to changing things midstream or during the course of the year while one is in effect and making changes, you know, to something else. So we have tradition, yes, sir?
I didn't really.
Okay, okay. I was just going to say that we traditionally have had everything ready by the second or third week of July to avoid that, you know, issue. And we have had, as you can imagine, like when we. And we have had, as you can imagine, like, when we talked last year about the cellphones, for example, continue to receive feedback, but made any changes for the, the next school year, the upcoming school year.
Yes. I just wanted to add to that. What Dr. Lance has described is certainly preferred and usually the, the norm. However, you know, the situation could present itself, where the board decides it wants to take action that has implications for budgetary, uh, budgetary policy changes. And if it impacts the code of conduct of what we have in place, then we would amend it and develop the process to notify all of our stakeholders and send it out as an amendment. So, we can do that. Of course, it's not, in my view, a good practice to have a series of those types of events occurring. But I just mention that in case that we have some exception or some thing that the board considers an emergency that we need to take a look at. There's always an opportunity to, to do that and do it the right way, so.
Is there one in particular that we did that with several years ago?
I don't know what, how others would feel, and it kind of goes back to Dr. Stewart's master schedule that, that he had put together. So, in one sense, you know, I don't want to recommend anything that's going to cause budgetary challenges and delays. But I do think as I was reading these, I know that with this particular policy, and I think the JCH that's, that's going to come up, there's been a lot of community interest in that. And then, some of us know with the, the medication policy, that, you know, I've gotten a lot of feedback over a couple of years from parents that had some concerns about that. And so, I know as a board, we've talked about trying to, at times, engage the community more, and just seemed to me that, you know, if we're, if we're good with it, then, then so be it. But somewhere in our master scheduling, or somewhere in our practices as the policies come forward, that we don't always find ourselves trying to make decisions against a printing timeline, and that we're really trying to do it in a way that gets the feedback and input and buy-in and ownership sort of by the way of what's happening. So, I don't know where people stay in my senses. I still like to see it out there, but if there's not, you know, general consensus, I'm not going to make a big deal about it, but I do think it's something we have to, have to consider moving forward.
So, two things I would say. One, I think in getting out ahead, determining what policies we believe rise to that level where we desire community input is important. Obviously, we have a lot of policies, I, I don't think that we would do that. I don't think suggesting it either, on every single policy that, that been administered. I, I was trying not to say that. But, but regarding this policy, I really just kind of like to take a poll and see what we are. With this, I, I, my, my, my own opinion is that the policy is written well. I think it's about following through on the regulation now that has been written associated with it. I'm, I'm not sure what different, what could be done with this policy other than just automatically expelling someone that's, you know, charged with, with the crime. So, ha- having said that, just, I'd just like to know from you, go with the vote tonight? Or is it something you want to see for the, for public review? Because we'll, we'll have to move on. Brad?
I'm okay with the policy, and maybe there's some question about the regulation, so.
Rodney?
I'm trying to make sure I'm straight here. So, the, explain, where, where's the piece, where's, because I'm confused now. But the, the item that references.
You can have the red line on page four, under three, involuntary disciplinary transfer.
Okay.
That's the one change that they made, and I think you basically surfaced content from another area of the policy and modified it slightly.
Moved it up to a more common than in the policy.
And then deleted the, although the superintendent or his or her, and then deleted it where it was kind of referenced under generally, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I come back to your?
Yeah.
Noel?
I'm fine with voting on it for this evening with the printer deadline that they have. But I do understand what Rodney's talking about, about getting public input on big policy issues. We may not know what big policy issues are until an event happens, but I'm okay with voting for it tonight.
Nora?
I'd like to just weigh in on something that Mr. Jordan asked. He was asking, would there ever be a case, other than before the end of July, when you begin printing this, that the board may want to take some other actions? And I can tell you that there has been, when Columbine occurred, all kinds of things occurred. So, there's certainly, I, I don't want to say, I would not agree that there's, we would rule out that the board would take any particular action. So, I think there is that escape clause, Mr. Jordan, when if the board, if it rose to importance of the level of the full board and the full board want to take action, I think their mechanism, there certainly is more difficult to get students to sign, parents to sign, and everything else. But there's, there's still, still is some action that the board could take if, if something of importance rose to that action. I just.
Are you okay with what is tonight?
I will.
Courtney?
I will, but let's just be clear too. At our retreat, we talked about having a policy committee, and that we'd have things rolling through in a timely way, so that we wouldn't be bumping up against these kind of artificial deadlines. Printing, I would put in that bucket of artificial deadline. So, this is not the ideal, but hopefully moving forward after first of August, when we really get this in place, and Dr. Birdsong's, you know, moving and grieving with the policy development and, and roadmap, then I think we'll be in a better place. Tonight, I'm fine.
Okay, so, how can we help you be clearer?
It's JFCR that I'll come back to, to the extent that if it has any impact on JCAAT, that I may come back, those, the, the regulations associated.
Once we're gone, we're gone. No, I'm kidding.
Actually, believe you, but I haven't right to vote.
Okay, all right, next policy?
JFCR, the standards of student conduct. And in our discussions with Mr. Cloud, we noted that option two, the VSBA, option two, standards of student conduct would be the recommendation that we would make. And it brings our changes up to the current VSBA. We noted that we needed to allow for the electronic cigarettes piece, and then addresses the cellphones as well.
And so, to my understanding, that this regulation needed to be fleshed out in more detail, so, so that it really clarifies the action associated with the policy.
Yes.
Brad? I just want to make sure, we're on, which policy we're on?
The regulation.
JFCR.
R, okay, yes. The only question I had was on item twenty, it's on page six of the red line?
Of option two.
Uh, 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 no, option one.
Option one.
So, we're going with option two then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, never mind. Let me see, now, let me see what this says here. Because I, did it interfere, or did it conflict with our current cellphone policy?
Option one did, but not, in option two, it addresses.
Shall not, okay, there we go, that's, I missed that, I'm sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question answered.
So, can I ask a question? It looks like under option two, number twenty, page nine, they are deleting mandatory expulsion for bringing a firearm onto school property. And then, instead of recommendation for expulsion? Where, where is the expulsion for firearm? So, the addition, so nineteen's a recommendation, and then in twenty, they deleted the mandatory?
Yes.
Yes. So, it's up to us to decide, frankly, as a board, if we want to move to recommend versus mandatory?
Yes.
Under option two?
And the legal requirements have always allowed for that, so it continues to allow for the board to have that discretion based on the, the outcome after a particular infraction or disciplinary.
But till today, we have a policy that says mandatory expulsion for bringing a firearm onto school property. That's our current policy, is that correct?
In terms of, we have the opportunity to do that, but that's not, I mean, and that's how we've addressed it as a board, but that's not something that, it's not something that's been mandatory. I mean, we, we have operated, though, in a mandatory fashion whenever there's been a loaded firearm.
So, we've operated under zero tolerance?
Yes, mm-hmm, right.
The policy doesn't specifically say that. We've never had a policy that specifically says, you bring a firearm to school that could shoot and kill somebody, you will be automatically expelled.
No, but never, but not to my nonsense.
It gave you some discretion.
It did. Yes, mm-hmm. Yes.
I think I'm confused with the reading. So, in the, in the JFC regulation, option two, page nine, number twenty?
Yes.
In the red line version, the, the red line that has, that is stricken, what, what is that? That's, that's not an existing regulation? What, what is the change?
What was the point?
JFCR, option two, page nine, number twenty.
Are current, it's not in there.
What's not in there?
That particular mandatory expulsion for bringing a firearm, uh, firearm to school. I don't see that in the, in the current.
So, it's, so are we doing like two revisions at the same time? Is that what's happening?
I see, actually.
I see it, I see it, this is mandatory.
Expulsion for bringing a firearm.
Right, so if the, the current is mandatory.
Right.
And then, option two, we are changing it, the, it's being proposed that we change it to not mandatory. Is that correct?
Well, it's a recommendation as, as opposed to mandatory. But the way Mr. Cloud explained it to us was that, in our current policy, we always had the ability to make a decision on the individual case, whether we wanted to expel or not. He said, that's the way the statute was written, but, and that's the way we followed it in Norfolk. But what the VSBA is recommending is that it now, the other school districts might not have interpreted it that way, that they had the option of either expelling the student for having a firearm or not.
And he noted that the VSBA proposed revisions are based on statutory changes the General Assembly made this past session concerning mandatory expulsions for drugs and weapons. Strictly speaking, these mandatory expulsions have never been mandatory. Virginia law has always provided that school boards could either on their own or by delegating the authority to the administration, review such cases, and make a finding that the circumstances in fact warrant some lesser punishment, such as a long-term suspension. However, apparently, many divisions did not understand this and were treating such violations, violations as subject to an absolute man, absolutely mandatory punishment of expulsion.
So, there's, there's, there's mandatory based upon state law, right? And I think what is being said is that it was never really mandatory based upon state law.
Right.
Local school boards, local districts have the flexibility to either have certain things mandatory or have them go through a recommendation process. So, I guess I'm asking, at this point, why would we not want it mandatory expulsion for bringing a firearm or other similar devices, destructive devices onto school property? Why would we, why would we not want that mandatory?
Trying to think of their cases where.
Yeah, and, and the only case, cases I can think of, and I'm not saying it shouldn't, shouldn't be mandatory, is we've had such cases where someone places a weapon in someone else's locker. And the person whose locker it was placed in is expelled, even though they didn't bring it, didn't belong to them. Now, there's been one or two cases where they allowed somebody to put it there. Other cases where somebody, you know, had access and placed it there. And then, you know, you begin to kind of weigh, do we want to make this a long-term suspension with special conditions, or based on, you know, set of facts in this particular case, expel this student?
So, so, you know, the question becomes with this, if we use that as an example for, and, and, you know, systems have had a number of examples that relates to firearms, and so, I agree. But if a student brings a firearm to school, then places it in someone else's locker, then once the review is done, it is secured and is secured, and it, it is secured in student number two's locker. Then, depending on how we develop this policy.
Right.
Then, student number two, if we support the policy as just strictly mandatory expulsion, then student number two has to go automatically to expulsion.
Right.
The question is, does the board want to consider it as a process where it needs to be reviewed? If that's a situation like that, to determine if everybody needs to be permanently expelled? Because if it's mandatory, every, even that student?
Right.
And after the review, the person that brought it, everybody's permanently expelled. So, you know, is that, is that an issue and a concern of, of, of the board? And quite frankly, of us as, as administrators, if that happens, you know?
So.
And I want to make another point, as far as like the recent dear, dear colleague letter that we received on zero tolerance from the feds, asked us to go back and look at the policies that are in place, and, which is, I think, what led to the change for the General Assembly to make it as a recommendation as opposed to mandatory. Because when we do mandatory, we have situations that students, for example, that one, gets caught up in. We, there's no lead, where there's no wiggle room to look at it on an individual basis if we say it's mandatory. So, it's a recommendation, but, you know, how we move forward is based on the individual cases.
Well, so my, my feeling, and I don't know where other board members may be, so, considering all that, then maybe the, the issues around possessing, I don't know what you call the person who brings it, but it would just seem to me that the person who is responsible for bringing a firearm, destructive device, firearm muffler, firearm slicer, silencer on school property should receive a mandatory expulsion. Now, on the possessing side, you know, maybe that's, goes through some type of, some type of review. But I, I, I mean, I hear you and I understand, and I have all kinds of concerns around these zero tolerance mandatory policies and what they, what they result in. But my, my sense right now is, is leaning towards, if you bring the firearm to, to school, that there should be mandatory expulsion. And, you know, if you stick.
What if you and Mo and you brought it to school?
That doesn't happen too.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking dad has a firearm, stashes it away in the kid's bookbag, for whatever reason, to hide it. And I think this is crazy.
That really happens, though.
Then, then dad needs to be charged.
Well, but you see, did you expel the kid, expel the kid from school? Dad should be charged, but why expel the kid? Because he didn't check his bookbag?
Well, I would expect that if we, instead of a mandatory expulsion, if we are recommending expulsion, that in most cases, that would happen, probably the majority, ninety-nine percent of the cases, it would have, it would be recommending for expulsion. Because, of course, that would come before us.
Well, let's, can I just caveat here? We're not all going to be here ten years from now. So, we do need to think about the longevity of our decisions. And I'm not saying I disagree with you, but I just wanted to point that out. We need to set policy, thinking about the future as well.
That's true.
So, I, I don't, sorry to interrupt you, but I just kind of wanted to.
Well, yeah, no, but I would, I would, I would suspect that future school board members would also want to have that kind of flexibility. While I would also expect that they would have the same kind of sentiments that we would have, that most of these cases that would come before us would result in permanent expulsion.
And just a note, I mean, I think that following the proper. And just to note, I mean, I think that following the proper immediate review would allow us to get, get at what you were pinpointing in terms of whether it was placed in a locker and the student didn't know. That's why you do the investigation. And so by leaving it open, it allows us to do permanent exposure where it is appropriate. And in most cases, it's probably going to be appropriate. But there are some cases where, you know, you may have even elementary schools, students that are involved and didn't know and that kind of thing. You have to, you have to do, be vigilant and be, be usual due diligence to do the review. But then you determine whether permanent expulsion is appropriate for that particular student under the circumstances. This allows us to do the review and determine whether permanent exposure is appropriate now. The only other choice is to just say, if you're connected with, touched, or came into contact with a firearm on school grounds, then everybody's getting permanent expelled. Permanent expelled. That's the only other choice.
I was gonna add to the, the, in terms of the grade level. And, um, as you know, the board also addressed a student not too long ago, an elementary school student with a circumstance like that. And while the option was still there, the, and the board made the, you know, determination about what to do, they had the flexibility to discuss and look at the circumstances related to, you know, this very young child, um, that was recommended for expulsion.
Can I just ask another question? So we're talking about JFC dash R regulation. What does the policy say?
In terms of?
What does the JFC regulate, policy say? Cause the regulation's supposed to follow policy.
The JFC, yeah, the JFC policy is a very long policy. That deals.
Yeah, well, it, it doesn't even.
Yeah, the JFC.
Um, we have the regulation.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, and whatever the approaches that we get there is fine. I just think that as a board near the community, we need to be clear and consistent with the message when it comes to violence and weapons and things like that in our schools. And so if there's some other way of communicating that and expressing it so that as things are adjudicated, it's clear what the board and community will is, so be it. I just, uh, that's why I kind of pulled that out. Cause I was trying to figure out if at one point it said mandatory and we were moving away from it. I just really wanted to understand the rationale for moving away from it and not get caught in, uh, I mean, there are always going to be some exceptions no matter what we do. And, uh, and I'm with you, I don't want to see people caught up in that exceptionary case. But if the other ninety-five percent is, uh, just trying to make sure we have a safe and orderly environment and it's clear that we don't, like with better terminology, we don't play when it comes to that. I just want to make sure that that's, that that's clear, it's communicated, that's the, that that's our will. So I couldn't quite follow with all the redlining and mandatory and so forth, what the bottom line was going to be.
And, and that Norfolk district is not taking a more lenient policy on weapons or drugs or other paraphernalia, that this is a regulation that is based upon what the, uh, state has determined. And we're merely aligning our policy regulations with those regulations. And this has always been the case. Because what I don't want to happen is to have something say, Virginia Beach schools, Chesapeake schools, Hampton schools all have zero tolerance on guns. But Norfolk has decided, you know, the exception. Um, now while that may be, make perfectly logical sense for us, you know, I don't want, I, I don't want that to be the situation. Um, I want parents, students and teachers to feel that we still have a zero tolerance mentality. We want the schools to be safe. If you bring a gun or weapon to school, you're going to be expelled. Now, we will investigate on, you know, case by case situation. But the overall perception is that, you know, we still have a quote unquote zero tolerance acceptance for this type of behavior. And we're not becoming more lenient just because we are necessarily going to adopt this type of regulation.
Okay, Brad, I'm gonna help move us along, cause he, um, I'm gonna withdraw my questions. Just go ahead. Okay.
Can I just point out one thing, but if you go to the JFCD weapons in school policy, the disciplinary sanction for bringing a firearm to school or to a school-sponsored activity is mandatory expulsion for at least one year in accordance with the policy.
So the current policy?
Mandatory expulsion.
That's for.
Weapons in school.
That's the one that.
That's for JFCD. And Mr. Cloud said in our, in our meeting that there's no need to change either these policies. JFC or JFCD, cause they were on the list.
So it's just the R.
Right, exactly.
Right, and that, that's why when we met with Mr. Cloud, as Dr. Houston just mentioned, those three policies, there was no need to change them because JFCD already addressed that particular component. So they were on there, but.
Yeah, it seems to contradict, JFCR seems to contradict JFC now.
So what, what is this meeting that you all are referring to?
Well, we, we.
We talked to.
Mr. Cloud to go over that typically he would be here this meeting.
Oh, okay, I thought it was some other meeting that I had.
No.
It was a policy meeting.
I thought it was a board meeting.
So let me rec, so let me, let, let, let me recommend this because we really need clarity from council on this.
Yeah, I think he needs to be here.
Right, and so, um, um, I, I would say if, if printing needs to take place, this would be a case where we need to make a change beyond the, the printing time that we would. But, but that we wouldn't take action on this particular one tonight because we really need to be really clear. And I do understand this is a regulation, but right now it seems that it's contradicting the policy. And of course, none of us have the expertise to provide clarity that I think is necessary.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure I'm just, what's the will of the board? I mean, if the, if we're going down the direction of.
I don't think any of us are clear. I don't think any of us are clear right now. When you read the regulation, it seems to contradict the policy. And it may not, it's just that we don't have the, the, the legal background interpretation to really understand it.
Right, based upon what Ms. Doyle just read. I'm saying is that, are we comfortable with what she just read? Or do we want to change what was just read? Cause no matter what direction that the administration goes down, as a board, we should at least say, this is what we're trying to achieve.
Sure.
And then they can make recommendations on the best way to achieve it.
I'm hesitant to change the policy and that kind of read.
I'm very hesitant to change the policy like that. I would, I would make, maybe make that one of the first, uh, policies that the, the, uh, Policy Review Committee looks at. But yeah, I'd, just on that, I would not, I couldn't, I couldn't support that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the only other point I was gonna make, um, and this is information directly from Jack. The current school board policies regarding mandatory expulsion have for many years now authorized the administration to review all such cases and make a determination as to whether an expulsion is warranted and impose a lesser punishment where the circumstances of the case justify one. And I just wanted to mention that because when I referenced, you know, the policies that were pulled, the JFCD, the weapons in schools, um, he was referencing that, the JFCF and the JGDZ, which he did note do not need to be changed or updated at this time. And that they reflect what, um, are, you know, they mirror or align with what our current policies are. And that's why he asked us during the policy review meeting and other meetings that we've had within the discussions about those.
Okay, did, did he look at the regulation?
Yeah, and the main, the regulation, we were basically speaking to the need to update some of the language as well as the electronic cigarette. And, uh, in the email, he explained to us that we were always doing what other school systems are now realizing that, you know, in certain situations, it wasn't that it had to be mandatory. One of the differences that we have, like, um, with the long-term, with special conditions, a lot of times we issue that as opposed to the expulsion because of extenuating circumstances in certain cases. So we have a process when we bring it to the subcommittee to look at their recommendations from the subcommittee level. But nothing is approved until the school board sees it. So there are different levels from this suggestion at the school level to the subcommittee and then to the final school board in all cases. So those are in place.
So really, the, the regulations really shouldn't be on the consent agenda. Cause we don't, we don't take action on regulations on our policies. So we, we really should remove the regulations from the consent agenda. We only vote on the policies. And, uh, and regulations are more FYI. We give our feedback, you know, to, to the administration on it. Uh, but, but that's not what we as a board would, uh, would, would vote on. So we, we, we need to remove those. And then if we have further discussion, uh, or if we want more information so that we discuss further these regulations, or as we set for the policy committee, if we would ask for a review of that regulation in the committee, then report back to the board. And I think that should be the next step.
So if I understand correctly, we are gonna go back in and take another look at the regulation?
So that, that is now the board, that this regulation would be reviewed by the policy committee and then brought back? But we're gonna remove all the regulations from the consent agenda because we only vote on policies. Okay? All right, um, moving on to the next policy, and we really pressed here for time now. Um, next policy, JHCD?
Yes, the administering medicine to students. And, um, that reflects a change in statute only. And that there was a new section added, um, based on the state code.
So I think there was a question, Ron, did you have a question about that? Okay.
Are you talking about that?
Um, no, I don't think I had any questions about that.
Oh, yeah.
It was fine.
Okay, all right, we're good on JHCD, uh, JJAC?
And student athlete concussions during extracurricular activities. And Mr. Sutton Miller is here to discuss the details related to the policy and the regulation that's proposed.
Uh, the concussion committee met, uh, in June and made a recommendation for two changes in the, in our current policy. And that's why we, we wanted to, to be here to present that. And if you, I think everybody got the packet, um, and were able, you were able to review their current policy. But in section C, um, number two, currently we have a licensed healthcare provider will evaluate, um, the, the concussion. And a licensed healthcare provider is the athletic trainer at the school level through state law. What we would like to see is to have all of our concussions that are evaluated by that athletic trainer, referred to a physician. That's the ultimate licensed healthcare provider. So that would be the change in number, in, in A, number two A. And then in B, we've come up with a new form where everybody on the concussion team at that school level, uh, will check off that that student athlete is ready to return safely to play. So those are the two changes that we're looking at. And I included, um, that form is, is in your packet. Under. Yeah, it's that one. Concussion clearance checklist? So, um, everybody, it's.
It's posted on board dot.
Okay. So currently we notify any and everybody in the school about a student with a, an athlete, a student athlete that has a concussion. And it's, it's to aid them in their return to learn. Uh, also is, it's gonna aid them in their return to play as well. So we're gonna involve everybody.
When you notify everyone who's ever, because.
Everyone is, uh, starting with the principal, the guidance, the school psychologist, um, obviously the parent. And then from there, the teachers that are involved with that student.
Okay, there's no HIPAA violations?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Talking about the process capability of what you wish, uh, do you already have a plan? As in having spoken preliminarily with, uh, some physicians or physician who would be willing to do this to make your process capable of doing this?
Also in this packet is a list of, uh, and that's, that's, that's a great question because we want to make sure that these athletes see physicians that are trained in concussion management. Just to go to a, just a regular physician to get a clearance note is, is not part of the program. So that doesn't, you know, they're not gonna circumvent the, um, the process here with that. They have to go to somebody that, that has been, is trained in concussion management.
And you've had preliminary discussions with people who would be supportive of this and could be available so your process is capable.
There's a number of groups in the area that, that we work with now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any questions on this policy comment?
Are we gonna be bringing a form to that physician to fill out?
Yes, yeah, there, there's, that forms in, in part of this package as well.
Okay, because, um, and, and when is that gonna get started? Or is it already in place?
Next week when we start football.
Next week, okay. Cause I'm gonna be on the lookout for that because what will happen is, is the students.
If they see the athletic trainer, you'll, if you're the physician involved, you'll see it.
Right.
If it's a parent that just takes their son or daughter, then no, they, you probably won't see that. But if they're evaluated by the athletic trainer at school, they will get this information to them.
Right, cause what I'm, what, what I'm thinking what might happen is, uh, Friday night football game, kid gets a concussion, comes to the ER, they see us. The parent asks me, can I have a note for school? Oh, can you fill this out too? Now.
You go, yeah, sure.
Well, I'm, I take concussions very seriously, but, and I would be comfortable filling out that form, but I always, on, on our release information, we always have to say, before you return to play, you have to be evaluated by your PCP or sports medicine physician. So, so we, um, well, some, some are certified then, some are certified for that. So, so we need to make sure that we, um, as in the emergency room, do not fill out that form for those kids.
They are probably not gonna get a form on Friday night.
I'm, I'm thinking they're not gonna get one, but, but they always, yeah, but they're, they're always asking for a, for a note of clearance and.
Okay.
Other than, other than the, um, gross, uh, uh, bias against chiropractic physicians because we're trained in concussion management too. That's, but that's another issue. It's not with this, it's with the Virginia School, High School Athletic League. That's our, that's our fight. But, uh, I'm trained in concussion management, but I can't sign the form.
They won't let preachers sign up on it either.
Well, I wouldn't let you adjust me. You can pray for my soul.
We do adjustments all the time.
So I, I, I just have a question about the wording of the policy. And, um, it's, it's based upon what we received in our book, um, during the retreat. So I'm, I'm going off of the paper copy that we had received. And it's on page two. It says, um, Roman numeral four, removal from extracurricular physical activities under point A. The last sentence, a student athlete who has been removed from play, evaluated and suspected to have had sustained a concussion shall not return to play the same day. And I was wondering if, if that had, could be changed to could not return to play until evaluated by a licensed medical provider? Because you do clarify that under the return to play protocol. But I just didn't know if we needed to have it very clear in that point A. To also have that.
If it's under five, I mean, if it's there under five.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I just noted it. They cannot return to play the same day.
Right.
Obviously, they cannot return to play until evaluated by a medical care provider. And then, um, it's a minor detail, I'm just saying.
You're just trying to be consistent between four and five.
Right.
You can't assume four versus five.
And then on page, uh, and then the very first page, under Norfolk Public School Concussion Management Team, under, uh, point B. The CMT shall maintain a record of all instances where student athletes have been removed from the game, competition or practice because he or she has been suspected of sustaining a concussion. So if we're gonna keep records of when the students are pulled out and when they have concussions, then I guess we just need to make sure that those records stay with the child if he transfers within the district or is released with their records when he goes somewhere else.
And, and they are, we, we've had student athletes, um, And, and they are, we, we've had student athletes, um, transferred to a, from Booker Tittleay Taylor, his impact scores, his...
Yeah, everything.
Past history has, has gone to that school, to that athletic trainer.
Okay. Are we being pre-seasoned, um, protocols?
Impact.
Impact.
Okay, so, so is that a recommendation you make for the change, nor, so we want to, we need to consider it, if you're asking that we can make that change, that you just recommended?
I, I think in order to be consistent.
Okay, that's, I want to be really clear, so, um, would you take us to the line out of, you're, you're talking under four, four A.
That's line.
A student athlete who has been removed from play, evaluated and suspected to have sustained a concussion shall not return to play that same day.
Will not return to play until evaluated by a licensed medical professional.
Mm-hmm, curious, yep.
I would hesitate to say licensed medical, I would say a certified concussion specialist if you're going to do that.
Who's, who certifies these out, these kids out?
The licensed, the athletic trainer is a, is a licensed healthcare provider, that's who will evaluate them the next day, and make that determination.
So the, so the language that should be used there, shall not return to play until examined by a...
Licensed healthcare provider, with the definition above in, in the preamble.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that change?
Yes.
Almost.
Or chi, or chiropractor.
Following the law.
All right, um, this is one point oh five, one...
I'd like to make a final request before we finish the policy consideration.
Sure.
Thank you. This request, this is a hope for Dr. King, it goes to our mission of creating successful community contributors, and our objective of helping our students become responsible citizens. It's about all students looking out for all students, and it's something that I mentioned in my closing comments of the last board, meaning something that I invented, which was called the Student Supported Safety Net. We had the honor, three years ago, of beginning a closing letter to, uh, school year, to all students, asking them and their parents to, if they notice anything in the community that is a crime, that they would consider using the crime line number and the new text. The third year, Dr. King and his colleagues sent this out, and I was very pleased. I have the opportunity each week to meet with Officer Hudson, uh, who is the PIO for the Police Department, and so we were talking about this just last week. This may have some relevance to where you came from today. Recently, Officer Hudson and the, and the Chief of Police asked the entire community to do this in regards to an area of Norfolk that we're well aware of. So my hope for Dr. King is as you look to apply all these policy updates to our student code of conduct, and as we greet our students coming back this year, that consistent with what we've been doing for three years, as they leave and go home, that we ask them again to continue this, this time throughout the school year. My prediction is that this will have great implications for the grand, grander scheme of things throughout the school year, it will have implications directly to our school, and it will be consistent with our police chief and everything wants to happen. Remember, we want to have successful community contributors according to our mission, and we want to have responsible citizens accord. My hope is that in some way, this paragraph from this letter could be reinforced at the beginning of school year for the safety of all.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Warren. Okay, we need to take a quick break here, and I would ask that we really try to keep it to, um, seven, eight minutes so that we can get back and finish the rest of this part of the agenda, okay? Pre-cess.